The Chair will rest in peace. Okay. First on the agenda is the approval of the expense warrant for five twenty-three seventeen, one hundred ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-three dollars and eighty cents.
I'll make the motion.
Any discussion?
Yeah, you can second it.
I'll second it.
Yes, no.
No, I'll approve, yes.
Yes.
Okay. Approve selectmen's minutes of three seventeen, three seven seventeen, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll provide you that motion.
Okay, um, no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Also, I would like to acknowledge reports and meetings for other departments. Conservation Commission meetings from two eleven seventeen, three twenty-one seventeen. Advisory Committee minutes, one twenty-five seventeen, two two seventeen, two six seventeen, two thirteen seventeen, and two sixteen seventeen. Could I have a motion?
You have that motion.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Announcements. The Memorial Day Parade will take place Monday, May twenty-second, twenty-ninth. Fellow citizens, veterans, first responders, scouts, students, and more are invited to join at a proper observance of the day. Parade starts at ten a.m. at the Brookfield Elementary School, continues to the Brookfield Cemetery at ten thirty a.m., to the Town Common Memorial Square at eleven thirty a.m., and case of rain, Assembly will be at the Brookfield Elementary School Cafeteria. Okay, our next is public access. Does anyone have anything they'd like to come up for, for public access?
Seeing no one, we will move along.
Seeing no one, we will move along. Okay, our first one on the agenda is, um...
Highway generator.
The highway generator. Would you like to discuss that?
It would just, well, two, two things that have come up. So that we had a discussion about a generator. Beth has done some research, and so we can wait on another time to get into the research that she's done. But basically, for, from, with respect to the highway department, that they'll be doing some studying and trying to do, uh, searching out surplus generators that might be available.
I know, her mentioned that, Cindy had mentioned it, okay.
So, and if, that's, that's one page, but then I see the fire chief here this evening as well, and so we received a correspondence earlier today from the electrical inspector suggesting that we may have some work to be doing with respect to the panel of the fire department. So, again, I don't think we need to talk about it tonight, but it's also something we've got to be concerned about and get on the list.
Okay, 'cause I know that they said that we could pass it over.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
But at least get it from, from people.
All right, now the next is to entertain a motion to ratify the acceptance of the mun- minute, munibid, high bid of thirty-seven hundred from Chuck Ran Autoparts for the nineteen-seventy-seven Mack truck.
Give a motion to that effect.
Okay, and I will second the motion. Uh, any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next one is, uh, to entertain, uh, the next one is the Cooley Hill property.
Right.
Okay.
So, the bidder in this particular case, or the person that was interested or was the high bidder, did put a deposit down and has seemingly disappeared. So, we have his money, but we have no...
And we sent him out certified, everything. Okay, I'd like to entertain a motion to put, um, it back on the market for sale. It's eleven acres of land.
And I would give you that motion.
Okay, nice.
Second it.
Second it, and any discussion from anybody at all?
Yep.
The Cooley... Well, part of it, isn't part of it in North Brookfield and part is in Brookfield? I don't know.
It's all in, all of it.
It's all in Brookfield.
Is it? It's all in Brookfield, no, a portion of it...
I mean, in North Brookfield.
North Brookfield. Are the ten, are the taxes waived, or, I don't know? That's a, that's a good question, but we should find that out there. Okay.
We don't pay taxes.
You don't?
And that, that's where I was going, we checked into that one here.
Okay.
Okay, um...
Yeah, that'd be good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's go back out there. Yep, if you need some help, let me know.
This one is, uh, righty. This is to entertain a motion to allow the Chair to sign for the M O U for the ADA Transition Plan Compliance.
You have a motion to that effect.
Okay, I'll second that motion, and I'll sign it. Now, where do I have to sign? And today?
Is twenty-third.
I, twenty, twenty-third.
We'll say aye.
We'll say aye.
All right. There we go.
Okay. Now we have, uh, entertain a mo- now it's, um, heavy wage authorization.
Yep.
And that is for, um, Dennis Clark, who, who will be the second operator for the Water Department at a rate of, uh, twenty-one dollars. I would like to entertain a motion.
You have a motion to that effect.
And, we're seconding.
And personnel went through?
Yeah, per- yes, the Personnel Board, we went through this and we signed this on five eleven seventeen. And, uh, any discussion on that? All in favor? Aye. Now we have also, we have, um, a vacation carryover request from, uh, Donald Herbert. He says, "Dear Selectmen, I am requesting permission to carry over the balance of my vacation time into the fiscal year, and I will use my vacation time by December thirty-first, two thousand seventeen. Thank you for your consideration." Donald L. Herbert. And he has a hundred and twenty hours remaining.
Make a motion.
I will second that motion. Any discussion on that?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Our next one is to entertain a motion to approve a request from the Brookfield Community Club to hold a five K family fund race on October seventh, two thousand seventeen, at eight a.m. for Apple Country Fair.
We'll make the motion.
Okay, and I will second the motion. Any discussion from anyone? All in favor? Aye. Okay, the next one is to set some meeting dates. Let me get out my calendar here, too. Okay. Okay. We were wondering, um, tonight we're gonna go over the articles, some more articles there for the annual and the special, and also I think we were going to go over probably the, um, the line items. And if, uh, I don't know, are they, Dave, do you wanna come up for us here?
Well, Jen?
Okay, and we're gonna go over, um, the articles for the special and the annual, and then we're going to also go over the line items. Now, are the line items pretty well set, or would we have to wait for Carrie to finish them?
Yeah, they're all done, but everything's in, but just wait for Carrie to do the spreadsheet and we'll be good.
Okay, do you think we would have to meet again, or is June sixth, or, or would June sixth be enough to meet?
That's too late, how about Tuesday? Next Tuesday?
No, we wouldn't have really a lot of time to prepare, how about Wednesday?
Yeah, that's fine, too.
Would that be all right with you?
That'd be real good, yeah.
Neither day.
Yeah. Do we need the full board to discuss it, or can we meet during the day on it? That would be June.
Yeah, y'all set some to June.
We're talking about, um, what's June first?
No, Wednesday, the thirty-first.
That's fine.
So, can we do that during the day?
You can be here in the evening if you need it.
Yeah, why in the evening then?
You wanna do...
Most of the work.
May thirty-first at...
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty, okay, we'll meet then. And then, um, will we need to meet on June sixth?
I would say skip that, then, go thirteen, twenty-seven.
Okay, okay, and then June ninth, we should probably meet at six o'clock before the town meeting. And then...
Yes.
June twentieth?
Oh, you wanna go twenty?
June, or do you think we should maybe do, uh, the thirteenth?
I'm thinking twenty now.
Twenty, yeah, all right, we'll meet June twentieth?
We need to do something.
And if we have to do something in between, uh, July eleventh?
Tom, give us the board's on hold.
Yep, July twenty-fifth? August eighth, and August twenty-second. So, are those dates all good for you?
So far.
And if anything comes up, you know, we'll just, um, we'll just change them, hope you don't have to change it.
Very good, I mean...
Oh, okay. Geez, we're onto other already. Moving right along. Well, I have a very efficient administrative assistant. All righty, this is now, um, okay, this is to set the dates. All right, uh, last week I had already signed the contract here for the Rice Corner Crossroad Culvert. And now, um, I guess that we have to entertain a motion to award the contract for the engineering of the Rice Corner Crossroad Culvert to comprehensive environmental in the amount of, uh, twenty-six, three eleven, three hundred and eleven. And, uh, the only part of it that the town has to pay is one thousand, three hundred and eleven dollars. So, I would like to entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Second it, all in, any discussion from anyone?
Just so, I've been quite forthcoming as to the benefits of having the admin at the highway department. And I would suggest that with the town's only outlay of thirteen hundred dollars, this is a significant impact in, in improvement of the town, and it comes about from the hard work that she's, continues to put in.
I know Cindy does, I have to, Cindy does an excellent job, and she does, she works very hard down there. She goes, I feel she goes above and beyond.
Yep, now we'll vote.
Do we have, uh, we, so do we have a vote?
We need to say aye.
Oh, aye, don't mind me tonight.
It's okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. We need to make sure we sign that document, too.
Oh, we did sign it, I signed it last week.
Exactly, it was signed last week.
It was signed last week.
We just had to open it.
And we just had to open up.
Earlier today.
All righty.
Which I covered.
Okay, next we will have, um, the, um, Town Accountant, Carrie, come up. Okay, Carrie, the floor is yours.
So, um, basically, what I'm asking for here is, um, for you to approve of the plan that I have set in place to correct and remediate all of our financial, um, accounting records and procedures. We all know that Schedule A, the balance sheet, and free cash certification are not, um, produced yet, and I've had our software company, um, go through everything, and they even agree that was virtually impossible for me to produce these documents the way that our system is currently set up. They've spent hours and hours, uh, looking through our system, and not only in the accounting department, but also in the Treasurer's Department and the Tax Collector's Department, there's a lot of discrepancies and a lot of, um, we don't know how to have the system really talk to each other well. So, I've approached Vadar, um, about helping us to clean up the books here, and, um, I have come up with, uh, a quote from them, and basically I'm, I'm asking for your permission to, uh, sign the contract so that we can get this, uh, up and running. Uh, basically, I've just pointed out some, some summary points here. Um, the money is already in my budget. Um, every penny of it is, is available, it's been allotted for this type of issue, um, and held over year to year. Um, it's been since two thousand fourteen, since we've had an actual audit in this town, and it was only for half a year.
Mm-hmm.
So, we really do need to have an audit, and this is a twofold proposal. Um, one would be to have Vadar come in, help to restructure all three departments, get everything balanced with a clean set of books, and that would allow us to, moving forward, start a completely fresh set of books. Any discrepancies can be handled at the time it happens, rather than three or four years down the line, um, because that is a lot of the problem. There are several discrepancies that have been carried through the years that nobody, I, I can't account for them anywhere because they're ten years old. So, they would be looking at cleaning everything up for us. They, um, have also spoken to, um, Scanlon Associates, which was our town auditor. Um, I guess in past years, he has been reluctant to come and, and do the audit for us because, um, the books are in such disarray.
Yes, because I've been trying to get in touch with him for a couple of years now, and he hasn't been returning my calls.
And that is why. Um, apparently, he instructed, um, this person who was here prior, I don't know who at the time in two thousand fourteen, but instructed them that, um, he was not really interested in coming back to, to work on a mess.
But Vadar, you said was able to reach him?
Yes, Vadar was able to reach out to him, and based on the proposal that Vadar has for me, um, Scanlon has agreed to come in the spring and do an audit up to and including fiscal seventeen for the cost of one year, fifteen thousand dollars. So, one year versus four years, um, that's a significant savings.
And we have that money?
That is in my fiscal eighteen budget.
Fiscal eighteen.
Yes, so that money is already, already there.
Right, and, and if I understand the proposal correctly, what we would be doing is classifying the Vadar work on the accounting structure within the town and the account alignment as audit preparation work.
Correct.
And by classifying it as audit preparation work, the funding could come from the carryover year's audit budget.
Absolutely, yes.
Uh, 'cause in essence, in doing that reconciliation between the actual monies and the virtual account and the account structure cleanup, that could be classified as preparatory work for the actual audit, which a different party will be coming in and doing. So, very, Vadar is coming in and acting as a third party.
Yeah, I understand, and I talked to Carrie.
It's, it's, it's more for the, it's more for folks that might not have, have, you know, kind of the background, it's not so much. Um, and that way, we have one entity doing the audit preparation work with you, in essence, by the audit of the accounts, and then a second entity coming in and actually doing the audit.
Doing the audit.
And with that entity having some faith and confidence that an independent third party has helped with that reconciliation of the accounts between the departments virtually and getting all the balances.
Yes, and Vadar is also willing to, um, to come and aid with the audit, with Scanlon. So, if there are any issues, Vadar will be right there, they'll know exactly what happened, they'll be able to go through with him and tell them, you know, okay, we found this, we moved it here, we did this. So...
For just a bunch of cleanup in the spring.
And didn't you also say that, um, twenty-five hours of training will be for you, the Treasurer and the Tax Collector?
Yes, included in this, um, um, proposal from Vadar, it will be twenty-five hours to each of the following, the accountant, the tax collector, and the treasurer, um, to work with us in, um, any issues that we have from our day-to-day issues, um, from entering, uh, bills to reconciling items. They might be able to show us how their system is better functioning now that it's been cleaned up. Um, the big, the big thing of this really is, uh, the current system is not set up to state standards. So, to produce these documents that the state requires is extremely, uh, time-consuming. Um, whereas, if we, if we have them set up our books to the Yuma standards, I literally have to press a button and most of our information is uploaded right into D O R. There's no room for error. Um, it's just, I, I'm kind of shocked as a professional to see how this has happened. Because I pulled my hair out for months trying to follow what has been going on, and it's, it's, it's impossible. It's impossible.
Well, I wanna thank you, Carrie, for doing all this research for us, and, you know, to, to go to all the troubles of getting us updated to where we should be, and so we can just have a fresh start on all the books.
The other issue also is, um, the, the second half of fiscal seventeen is, is behind because of the Treasurer's seat. So, Vadar is willing to come in and get that department caught up and balanced.
That's, that's wonderful, good, thank you.
So, um, it's a lot of support, they've designated three specific people to come in full-time and do this until we're clean. Um, they're estimating that, uh, they're looking at three phases. The first phase would be to balance and clean up all of fiscal sixteen and get those documents out and prepared as quickly as possible so that we can, um, get that taken care of before it's an ish, uh, a bigger issue. Um, and then they're saying that, um, ideally, September, I would be able to file all of fiscal seventeen documents clean and fresh, and, uh, and then moving forward from there shouldn't be, shouldn't be as difficult as it's been this year. So, there's a lot that's playing into this, um, not just the accounting department. So, there's a lot of, uh, learning that needs to happen in all three departments, and they're willing to, included in this proposal, they're willing to, uh, put the time in to help us to succeed.
That's great, does, uh, anybody have, um, any discussion? Do we have, I'd like to entertain a motion to allow the Town Accountant to sign the contract with Vadar Municipal Software Services.
Just one more question, are they also doing anything to help the departments talking to each other through the Vadar system?
Yes, yes. Um, that will be included in the training that's provided to the three departments. Um, there are issues as far as, uh, getting the, the tax collector to, to talk with the Treasurer, to talk with the accountant, so we wanna learn as a group how to do this so that we don't have to call Vadar every time there's a problem.
Yeah.
Um, and have some set, sort of, written, um, uh, policy in place so that, let's say, I don't know how to do something, I can look in the book and say, oh, there it is, and I can just follow the steps.
Like a Hebrew manual.
Same, yes, exactly, exactly.
Which then brings up the topic of the financial policy document.
Mm-hmm.
And where we've gotten through the, the first part of it, kind of the rudimentary kinds of things, practices and whatnot, where we've pretty much done that, locked those down. This is a good time to take a deep breath, and when you're ready, we then implement those documents or those procedures within that document.
That's what I would say, yes.
Yeah. Good?
That's good, Carrie.
Good stuff?
Good stuff, thank you again for everything.
So, you wanted a motion, you had a motion?
Okay, and we've had our discussion, all in favor? I've got in the Town Accountant, um, signed the contract with Vadar Municipal Software Services.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passed.
Thank you, you've made my life so much happier today.
Keep going, Carrie, a lot of work. A lot of work.
Okay, all righty, now, before I do the correspondence, we wanna go back to, which one are we here? Discussion, okay, number nine, the discussion with the Advisory Board Request Tax Collector. Okay. Would the, probably some of the, couple of the Advisory Board members like to come up?
What's that, Linda?
This is gonna be the discussion on the, um, Advisory Board Request to the Tax Collector. Okay, um, after the discussion last week, um, it came to, um, my attention that I think, um, employees think that the Advisory Board is going beyond the char, their charge, their charge to do in the bylaw. And so, I would like to read that charge. This is, um, chapter four of the Advisory Board Section One. There shall be an Advisory Board for the town to which shall be referred all articles and any warrant hereafter issued for a town meeting. The Selectmen, after drawing a warrant for the town meeting, shall immediately forward a copy thereof to each member of said committee, which shall consider all articles in the warrant and make such report and print otherwise to the town meeting as it deems to the best interest of the town. The committee will also make reports and issue recommendations for all articles, questions, or other matters referring to Proposition Two and a Half so-called. The said committee shall consist of nine legal voters of the town to be appointed as provided in Section Two. Elected or appointed town offices or employees shall be eligible to serve, however, they must abstain from voting on the articles affecting their department. If any member is absent for five consecutive meetings of said meeting, uh, meeting, except in a case of illness, his position shall be deemed to be vacant and should be filed, filled as provided in Section Three, and this was amended on, uh, May two thousand six. Okay, we met the other, I guess, the other day, uh, Marie, you and Steve, I guess, met with Brenda about her, um, some, you want to see the deposit slips? I think things, from what I understand, things got a little bit out of hand with it.
They did, um, it wasn't, uh, Steve or I that were out of hand, um, so, which was very unfortunate, um, because we were just sent with a task, and that was my intent, was to look at documents and, um, get some information and go, and that was it.
Excuse me, she called me a liar, I mean, that's kinda hard to...
I never, I never once uttered the word liar.
Holly asked you point-blank, and you said yes, I called, I called you.
No, no, she assumed that. She, she assumed that, okay? Because I, because I said that we were there to help verify trips that were made to the bank. Can I please finish? I'm, I'm talking to Ms. Lincoln.
Okay.
Can I please finish?
You wanna keep order here, Linda, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
'Cause I'm, I'm trying to make a statement here of, uh, what happened. So, um, asking for this information, um, unfortunately, um, the collector was not happy to be there, and that was quite evident. Um, and that's, and I, and I understand that, um, there's been a bunch of things going on. All we wanted to do was look at some information and verify a few things and be on our way. And it was just made into much more than what it really needed to be. She, Steve, um, typed up, um, a report of the, um, meeting, um, which the advisory has not, um, approved yet. Um, he wasn't able to be with us on Monday so that we could discuss it, uh, because there were things left out that I wanted included in here. We had asked, I had asked to look for, uh, to look at multiple, uh, documents, um, pertaining to banks, banking, and there was a box available, as he says, in the report, and it's got a number, I mean, a number of, um, bundles in there of information, but from what I could tell, um, they're not easily recognizable as being wire transfers or actual over-the-counter transactions. So, yes, that would take a little bit of effort to go through them and try to identify over-the-counter transactions. We wanted to see more than one, all we got to see was one.
I gave you four deposit slips.
I only saw one, okay? So, um, in, in the interest of not making the situation any worse than it had to be, I just let it go. She did show us... She did show us how she had...where she'd gotten the information that she submitted to the committee pertaining to visits to Hometown Bank and Country Bank. Because on the Country Bank portion, we noticed that it was dated incorrectly as transactions in 2017. That had not even happened yet. So, we had sent back with that notation and we covered that there as well. And it was just basically a typo, I guess. She does have a notebook on her desk with...would she use the information from that black notebook to compile the two reports from the two banks that she gave us? So, that kind of helped verify to me where that information came from. Because initially, when it was presented to us, we were told that it was off the internet. When...that's what we were told by Mr. Falter. We were told by Mr. Falter that it can be taken any number of ways, okay? But indeed, it wasn't. It wasn't though. In any case, it was compiled. It wasn't...it was compiled...
No raising voices tonight.
Well, it was compiled from her book, whatever. That doesn't bother me. As long as it's some original document that it was compiled from. That's all I was concerned about. And at the same...there were a number of people that were there. Steve was there. I was there. The collector was there. Holly Chisholm was there. There was an officer nearby conducting some business. At one point, Peter Martel floated through the office. I didn't...I wasn't aware at the time. I think Karen might have been in her office, but I didn't see her. And yes, it escalated terribly. I was insulted. I was told that I should be ashamed of myself for dealing with this board and for with this particular issue when I stated, which I'm not even sure if they're allowed to ask us why we wanted this information. I'm not even sure that that was...that that's allowable. That's when people got really upset and Holly said that I was calling Brenda a liar. "Are you calling her a liar?" I said, "Yeah, just here to verify information." And Holly, unfortunately, and I know she's not here and I'm sorry to hear... But she almost came over her desk yelling at me, so, which was very unfortunate.
Madam Chair, I think we need to be careful about some of this.
Yeah, mentioning names of people who aren't here tonight.
People who aren't here who have been notified that there may be a concern. I think we're getting into a realm here...
This paperwork that we've gone back and forth.
Yeah. So, we need...
Well, it was...
Right. So, I think one of the things we really need to establish is let's pull the attribution and emotions out of it. What was requested, what has been received, okay? And have we been clear about what both the request is and what its purpose is? And then, is that purpose aligned with what the advisory committee is intended for? Because we have accountants and auditors for this entity for a reason.
Which haven't been done since 2014.
Okay, understood.
Okay.
But if there's...if there's... I just want to complete my thought. Everybody's asking for the courtesy of completing a thought. Okay, my first thought, I did interrupt you because I think we are getting into a territory that is not appropriate for open meeting unless the people being discussed are notified in advance and we have that discussion, okay? So, that's why I interrupted. I do want to complete my thought, which is that, you know, advisory committee advising on the budget, you might need some validation of information. If your concern was that we needed to validate the expense report that was processed on a warrant, okay? Then, we notify the proper people to do that verification. We just went through a verification with the fire department of three years of documents using our internal auditing asset, okay? It doesn't make sense. We treat one department one way and we're treating another department another way using a different entity to do that audit. I'm a trained auditor in aerospace. I am not a trained auditor in municipal finance, okay? Could I apply my skills as a trained aerospace auditor to municipal finance? Maybe, but I'd probably get something wrong, okay?
Okay. Well, then, it should have been stated at the outset of the request of our information. If you knew of another manner of which that information could be processed, it should have been said at that time.
I'm not certain how this request was originally generated and what process it went through. I'm sorry. Go ahead. I apologize. I didn't see you. Karen said...
I just want to put my two cents in here. The items that are being questioned, I'm a little bit confused about in general because every other department puts in the same information and gets the same reimbursement. Why was only one department questioned? You all put in for mileage.
That was my question also, you know, that it was to look at her mileage to see...
Right. It is part of the job.
Because...
Do you want to take that?
Because that was my question also, why her mileage was being requested. Because we had made...when we had our theft there back in 2014, we had passed a policy that we didn't want extra money hanging around here at the town hall, any cash. And we wanted this cash gone. You know, we wanted to take it to the bank. And now, she has a check reader, so she does a check reader. And with the cash, I mean, that's a must. It has to go into the bank and I don't think... And then, she put it all in. She had saved her mileage and she put it all in at one time. So, I mean, if she accounted to you, how many times, I'm sure that she did on her expenses, how many times that she went to the bank, I don't understand why this was all questioned. Because it's her mileage going and if other departments are doing the same thing, are they questioned?
We were dealing with that department at that time, okay? I wasn't even thinking about...the only reason I thought about other departments, I would say, because the assessor submitted a request for mileage, which we had never seen before, you know, prior to that time. And he presented it, you know, in a format and that was great. So, that kind of got me on the track of thinking, what forms are we supposed to be using to log mileage, okay? And in the back of the policy and procedure book, there are a number of forms there for various reasons. And one of them is a mileage form, okay? This wasn't being submitted to us. We couldn't look at a mileage form, okay? All we got was a lump that said, "I went this many times." And, okay, where's the verification of that? Now, it's already been said that you shouldn't be auditing my account, okay? For the past few years, I think a few of us feel that due diligence hasn't been done in the various departments in general with keeping track of things such...well, you can say mileage if you want, but not everybody, I don't think, applies for mileage. But in various ways, whether it's purchasing of equipment, I mean, since the...we had the little issue with it being said that the...it hadn't been acknowledged. None of the...I don't know how many employees have turned in to you acknowledgement forms for receiving the policy and procedure book, okay?
One.
One, okay. So, that's a great point. So, who's in charge of making sure that all the employees turn in those forms?
We are going through that document page by page. What you might have heard here earlier is we've gotten to a point where the mileage kinds of activities have been covered. The practices and procedures are to be...what form to be used. So, we, as of next Tuesday's meeting, we will lock down that part of the document. So, we have been remiss...and when I say "we," generally, all of us have been remiss in how we've been handling that policy and procedure. At the point, and I will be asking the department heads that will be attending next Tuesday, we've gotten to this point in the procedure. Because of Carrie's work, it really says the back half of that procedure wants to wait now. It's good enough. And we now have to go forward with the signing of the agreement that we're going to live to that policy. So, we've come a very long way.
Well, it's just a shame and I'm not placing the blame on anyone in particular, but this has been going on for years, you know, like various other things.
What do you mean, going on for years?
No, well, it... No, no, no. Not little things like getting acknowledgements from employees for the handbook and that such thing. I'm not saying that happened all recently. There's a history of maybe a little bit of lackadaisical enforcement of various things. And being that we're over a $7 million entity, you know, that we're dealing with money here, I just...it's a very small thing, as far as I can see, to assure that that thing is taken care of. That's all.
So, I guess from my perspective, is my...your concern with mileage reimbursement aligned? Are we...
And, well, that...
When she...
Yeah, I'm gonna...I'm gonna try to straighten this out really simple.
Could I say one thing first, Steve?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. We have...do we have a mileage form?
Yes.
Yes. And...because I remember when I was here, we used to have a mileage form. You had to put the beginning from the odometer and then you put it to the end of your trip. And we had to keep track of every time that we used that. So, you're saying it really...that she really didn't have anything like that.
Another acceptable form of proof would be to print out, such as a Google Maps directions. And you do it from the time of...the place of your employment to your place of your destination and that is your standard mileage for every trip you take, how many times you go. Which is, I believe, what she introduced to me as documentation.
So, when you did turn in for all of that mileage, you had turned in a sheet for each of those trips that you had made to the bank?
I had given them some of...this is what I gave the advisory board. It was basically a list of the dates and times that I went to the bank. And yes, when I was doing the Country Bank, I had to manually do them because I know I own a house in town. And when you hit eight-one, enter, yeah, it's going to go to 2017. And that was...I told them that was my bad. I apologize for that mistake. Obviously, I'm not able to make deposits in August either, so unless I'm doing something pretty spectacular.
So, I think what the question was actually is, when you submitted for your mileage, did you just list the dates and your destination with the miles to and from?
I just...well, because I had two banks. I did Country Bank and then Hometown and then I...
Okay, as two separate mileage claims? Or once along the...
No, it's all hung together. But the thing was, that form that she just showed you was not the original form that we were given with our budget as an explanation of an expense.
It should have been with the budget. I'm presuming this came up because you reviewed, like, detail warrants after signing. Is that where that...
I just wanted to make sure that it was understood that all we got was a sheet that said, "I went 537 miles." You know, we didn't get any verification of that through, say, those bank statements until later. After we had begun... After we had been asking questions.
It wouldn't be the bank statements. What I'm trying to understand is what piece of information flowed from the tax collector to the accountant so that a check was cut for reimbursement? That's what my question is.
A bill scheduled just like everybody else. And she submitted the form with the documentation of the mileage. I actually used Lois's form. That was on my computer.
For mileage?
It's probably the one.
And I'm just asking, did it have individual dates and miles driven?
We have a question over here.
Madam Chair.
Super quick. The only problem with the dates in the original submission is that shouldn't be general knowledge to the town as to when this person is driving with money in the car. So, that's why the original dates weren't originally submitted. So, it's a little outside of norm.
Yeah, it is a little outside of norm, isn't it?
But those dates can vary, you know, depending on if she's received cash or so, you know.
Madam Chairman, do we have...are we prepared for town meeting? We can go on all night. Are we prepared for town meeting? Do we understand how much mileage that the tax collector needs to do her job? Do we know that figure?
Well, of course, that's going to vary from year to year depending on what she takes in.
It's in her expense.
Do we average about 1.7 times a week?
So, does the advisory...Madam Chair, does the advisory committee have knowledge of what the expenses are for the tax collector for mileage for the next fiscal year?
Yes. The answer is yes.
Do we have any other information that needs to be provided, the advisory committee, from the tax collector?
I'll leave that part up to him, but one question that I had was policy about when you go to the bank, if you have cash. Because apparently, well, you were at that meeting, I wasn't. So, maybe you...because is money supposed to be kept in the building or is it supposed to be deposited that day? That you take it in because there has been that.
It depends on the amount.
Yeah, it depends on the amount of the money that is taken in.
And what would be the amount that would necessitate a visit?
We did not label an amount.
We didn't label them.
What we said was that if we were uncomfortable with an amount of...we didn't want any money in the building.
I believe it's written. That's like their earliest convenience.
That's how we did it, but the point was that we did not want money in this building.
Correct. I...okay. So, then, if money isn't wanted in the building, then more frequent, I would imagine, trips need to be...
That's why she needs to go.
More frequent, really, than my guess mileage is obviously.
That's...yeah, that's not an issue.
Well, our previous collector that we had before Brenda, she used to make a trip to the bank every day because she had, you know, she had checks. She didn't have any check reader back then. And she had cash, so every day she would make a trip down to Hometown Bank. And nobody ever questioned that before because these were legitimate trips that she went. And then, a lot of times, she would go and she'd always come back. And she would stay here till 3:30, 4 o'clock in the afternoon.
First of all, the procedure book, our famous procedure book, Clarence. If you look at it, first of all, it states that any and all money is to be given...gone to the bank with the tax...with the treasurer, if you look at that. And it also says in another paragraph, anything over 25 cents cannot be...has to be brought to the treasurer. It's in the book. So, that's not even in...and the procedure's not even in there for her to go. That's just one aspect of the whole thing here on your procedure book. Number two, the reason this whole thing came about, we're not trying to pick on any one individual in this town. I don't have any personal problems with her. What has happened is she came to our...she presented our...her budget and she stated that she was going to the bank on Fridays. But before this, any and all money has to be brought to the bank, she said, okay? But she's not working Fridays. But yet, she says in her document to the advisory board that she was going to the bank on Fridays for two hours. So, then, we said, "Wait a minute now. This is inaccurate here." So, she's got two hours in there that she's going, plus she says that she's going to the bank. So, we said, "Okay, let's see if we can verify this. Maybe it's just a mistake." That's why we wanted the bank deposit slips. Then, I got said, "Oh, I'm elected. I don't need it. Oh, you're going to mug me. You're going to rob me." Those are the questions. "I'm too busy. I got to do tax collections."
Madam Chairman, may I finish, Clarence?
We're talking truth here and I know you hate the truth, but let me speak. Let me just speak.
Okay, that's it right there.
All right. I'm sorry. Okay. So, we wanted verification, okay? And that's the reason we asked for the bank deposit slips, okay? And I guess from what I haven't seen, the thing that they went to Thursday night, or the other member has it. I haven't seen that yet, but from what I've been told, it was only one slip to the bank on Friday, maybe two, okay? So, when we get documentation from a town employee, we try to trust them, okay? But when we get documents and it says completely opposite and she's not working those hours on Friday, but yet, she's going to the bank and you can't go to the bank unless you're taking money on that day. So, that's why this all came about. And now, it's getting blown out and we're putting a barrage up to cover this. And we're just trying to get documentations. Our board works very, very hard in there. We're not just rubber-stamping stuff. We're trying to analyze. I wanted to analyze more, but we just didn't have the time.
So, you want exactly what dates and times I go to the bank?
No. If you listen...
I'm going to the bank on Friday. What does this mean?
Go ahead.
Let me speak.
No, no.
No, no. Just tell her. Answer her question. Why do you care about her going to the bank on Friday? Yep.
Why do I care if you're going to the bank?
Okay, sometimes.
You stated to us...you gave us documentation that you said you were going to the banks every Friday and it was taking two hours.
Correct. When I was working Friday, I went every Friday.
You haven't worked Fridays in a long time, Brenda.
Did you hear that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I have added... And I have added those hours during the week. And I took your advice, Dave, and I took my lunch break. Like, like I said, I don't take a lunch break. I went home for lunch and I came back a half an hour later, there was four people surrounding my desk. So I think I know how to do my job better than you two think you know how to do your job.
Okay, I.
I'm gonna finish speaking, I'm not done yet. You asked the questions, women now, you asked the questions of why our board got into this and why we haven't done it with another department, okay? And I just explained that to you.
All right, cause I mean, we can sit here all night and go back and forth.
No, no, we're trying to clear, we're trying to clear the air and, and get something resolved here. And this is, this is what took place and this is why it took place.
Madam Chairman, I would make a recommendation. Since how we have a trained auditor, auditor in our purview. And who has already done an extensive audit of another department to the satisfaction of this board, that we turn to that auditor and have her work with the tax collector to assure that documentation's in place.
Yes, I think that's a good idea.
And report back to this board.
Okay.
What, duck.
Now, I've submitted to the advisory.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
Because I've already put in about 15 hours of this, all these requests from the, that board. It's absolutely insane.
The other part that needs to be, the other part that needs to be cleared up is that three, a few of the visits and requests have come from Mr. Falter, okay? He was not sent by the advisory to make those visits. He did that on his own, okay? We're not looking to bug anybody any more than, than we have to. Unfortunately, after the first time that he went and he brought us some information, he was advised not to do it again without advisory permission, and he did so anyway. We thought it was only twice. According to Brenda, the total amount was three times. We weren't trying to cause the issue. These multiple requests for information were causing the issue three more times than we authorized that they be asked, okay? So that, that was unfortunate, very unfortunate.
And you know, we just can't keep going back and forth with us.
No, absolutely.
And then we've already, we've gone through, we've called town council many times. We've gotten town council's opinion, I mean, that has to stop. Because people are always complaining, we spend so much money on town council. And this is why, because all these little things that come up all the time.
Well, this is an important thing.
Madam Chairman, may I speak? All we ask for is bank deposit slips. Why was the problem with getting bank deposit slips?
Because you've already admitted to your own board that you stalked me.
I stalk you? That's an out and out lie too. That's a lie too.
Brenda, Dave.
The both of you.
I think that's a lie.
Okay, we stalked them.
That's an out and out lie.
Okay, that's enough.
That's enough, that's enough. Do we want to go on with our motion?
What we have is a motion before the floor that the, that the auditor, finance person who audits and is trained to do audits to review mileage within the tax collector's purview. So that's the first thing. Then I would then turn to the advisory committee and ask the advisory committee if there's any other information that they require of the tax collector. Is there anything left?
Well, this, I'll just, which I don't think it matters now.
To prepare for town meeting, are you, do you have from the tax collector?
May I answer the question there, Mr. Clarence?
I'm phrasing the question.
I had to go to the state, and I was ordered, she was ordered by the state for me to review the documents, not two other people, okay? Now, we have, this town has to go to that extreme just to get bank deposit slips to the finance board? There's something wrong. What's it say here? Let me read this though, now that you read.
This is a personal thing, Dave.
I'm speaking, I'm speaking right now, thank you.
And Dave, that's.
In the discharge of duty, said committee shall have free access to all books or records and accounts having to do with the financial affairs of the town, including bills, vouchers on which money has been or may be paid from, from the town treasury.
But it doesn't say anything about deposits.
We did, we're talking about deposit slips, that's, that's, that's a voucher. Request for information from the committee.
Deposit slips are not a voucher.
Okay, it's not, okay, it, it's in here though, just listen. From the committee shall be responded to by town offices, boards, committees, or departments in a reasonable manner, okay? And in a reasonable timeframe. However, the provision of such access, including requests for information, shall not unduly interfere with the conduct of the official town business or the ability of town employees to perform the functions of their positions.
So.
And if, and if we were given, if we were given the information from the get-go, there would be no interference, and we wouldn't even be talking about this.
She's been trying to, she, she does her job. She works above and beyond a lot of hours that she's here.
Linda, don't go there. All, all we asked for was bank deposit slips based on what you gave us.
But it doesn't say.
You don't understand, you have a check reader, you don't have a typical deposit slip. Now, I could explain that to the cows in the home, but neither one of you want to even.
We're talking about when you actually go to the bank.
I totally understand what you're saying.
Brenda, we're talking when you go actually to the bank.
Okay.
This is the.
And that report does not jive.
Okay.
And the chair has.
This is, I think we should end this conversation right here and now.
And what are we gonna, okay, so what's it gonna be the conclusion and how are we gonna improve? What's the improvement gonna be next time, Linda?
Was that already stated?
Yes, Carrie, Carrie is gonna work with her and she is going to be doing an audit. And she's going to be, of all mileage slips, and then we'll see if those are what you offer your satisfaction. And they have to be.
I thought that's what the two of them went in there on Thursday was, was to do.
I was not involved.
No, Carrie wasn't.
No, Carrie wasn't.
No, I meant two people from the board went in to see her on Thursday. I thought that was resolved Thursday.
Sounds like it's not.
I don't think it was resolved from what I heard about it.
I haven't seen, I haven't seen Steve's report, so I don't know.
It was all with me, I thought I was done.
That's, that's what I thought too.
Well, that's what Steve told you. And, and he didn't really have a right to say that until this came back to the board and we got a decision from the full board.
We have to make a decision now on our vote.
What's the decision gonna be on?
No, okay, Mr. Snyder would like to make the motion again?
I want to be very clear, I was going to second half of the motion because I thought it important that was there any additional information that was missing. So are we prepared for town? Is the tax collector line items in place for town meeting?
Yes.
Yes, I think they are.
Okay.
End of discussion. Make the motion that we have Carrie do the audit and move on.
Okay, and.
And I'll second that.
And we've already had our discussion, and so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're over there.
Okay.
Okay, our next one is, we're gonna do our correspondence so that we can finish up and we can get on to do our joint meeting with the advisory board. All right, we had something here from MassDOT, and the highway has a. Can I have it quiet, please? We have something here from MassDOT. It was an, a bridge inspection was done on the Quabog Street and the Dunbrook Bridge. And this was, this was a part of municipal bridges that are owned on, by the town. And so this is all this is, and Herb already has a copy of that.
Do we get approval to start moving forward?
Yes, oh, we did.
Yes.
Yeah, that's the approval to start going forward.
And they're drafting the bid.
I know the bid, yeah, cause Cindy sent the bids.
Yep.
Okay, and now this is a vote to allow the tri-community YMCA to use the South Pond Beach for swimming lessons from 7:10 to 7:21 of 17. And I'd like to, a motion.
Need a motion?
Need a motion for that?
Sure.
Second.
Any, any discussion?
No.
And they have.
We had some discussion last week.
And so they have agreed to make a $200 donation to the, to come to pay for the porta potty.
Great.
All right, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And then this one is also, this is from Tantasco Regional High School. It says, Mr. Herb Chafee, Highway Superintendent, Town of Brookfield. Dear Herb, on behalf of the administration and students of Brookfield, I extend our appreciation for the assistance and supports provided to you and the Highway Department crew for the Town of Brookfield, ensuring safe roads and passes over the winter. Thank you again for an excellent work you do sincerely. Erin M. Nosework, E.D., Superintendent of Schools. That was very nice, I'm gonna send that. Okay, and this is another one for Chata. Okay. On, on or about June 20th of this year, the following music choice channels will be added. Love songs on channel 1920, romances on 1940, stage and screen on channel 1942, and classic masterpiece channel on 1949. If you have any questions, you can call Anna Lucy at 774-243-9735. Or her email address is anna.lucy@chata.com. And that's all that we have here, so. Now we'll move on to, we're gonna reo, we're gonna open the special town meeting. More?
Do you have a motion to roll back?
Open.
One second.
A second?
We're gonna open the special.
Gotta open the joint meeting. It's a joint, gotta open it as a joint meeting, so.
All right.
Yeah.
Do you each have, Karen, did you give them all copies or are they right here? Okay, all right.
Both of you.
Eat it, Karen.
Oh, they're all.
Each one has a packet.
Oh, each one? Oh, I'm sorry, Karen. All right, all right, everybody has a pack. See, they all have a pack. Okay.
I'd like to give back to what I left a copy of the, of the special annual town meetings in the box, so they, so you run them off, you can do that?
Well, there may, there may be.
Cause I, I did, I managed them and.
Right. There, there may be some more at the end. I had a problem, I was trying to send you the second half.
Oh, no, I mean, what I did is I wrote the special annual.
Yes.
And I put a copy of each in the chairman's mailbox, so I just wanted to make sure that you received it.
I think, I think you got, now, this doesn't include the changes?
Doesn't include the changes.
It does include? Okay, well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm saying is toward the end, there may be.
Well, this is just a draft, and the draft is just certain ones that I still don't, I, I wanna confirm whether or not.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to be clear about, okay.
Carrie, would you like to come up and join too if there's some questions for you?
Do I have to?
No, you don't have to.
You can sit right where you are.
You can sit right where you are, but I didn't know if you wanted to come up and join. Okay, our first article here for the special town meeting is article number one. To see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from the, from the assessor's consulting services account to the assistant assessor wage account, or take any action relative there too. And the amount is $2,500. And the reason for this is the shortfall is due to the extra amount of hours required to be worked by the assistant assessor above what was originally budgeted for the FY 2017 wages. The extra hours were required due to the work time missed by the working members of the Board of Assessors. Totally, 32.5 weeks are 487.5 hours during quarters one and quarters two of fiscal 2017.
Just going with the special.
And this is just a transfer from, you know, one account to the other.
Right.
You don't have the special.
The only people, absences, who had to work these hours to do the job.
So I'll make a motion that we support.
Aye, I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Article two.
Well, advisory board.
Oh, advisory board, I'm sorry.
Um, just to be clear, you're on the special right now?
Yes, the special, we just opened the special.
And he doesn't have a copy of that, we just have the annual.
Has he made his copies?
I don't.
They were both in the files.
Yeah, I just, I just told him that maybe that's where he's going is to get it. So article one.
So we'll leave the days with.
Did you find a date?
No.
I put both.
I mean, I got this manual.
No, I put together, okay, I'll make these copies, so I need to make.
Need copies for everybody?
Hey, David, there are two iterations of that, which is the correct?
The special comes before the annual, oh, okay.
Specials are both special, but they're both different iterations.
Oh, so you know what must have happened? Is I assume that maybe we have an old copy in here?
Right.
Yeah, yeah. This is the good one, this is one that you worked on last time. This is the good one, yeah. So you do, so what do you have, is that good? So you do have the special, he has one?
He does.
Let me have one, I'm gonna make some.
Okay, can we take a recess? Can we take a recess?
Yep.
Till we do that?
Me too.
I'll make a motion and do a recess.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Okay, we're back on.
There's a few other discrepancies too, but.
Okay, we're gonna start on article two.
Again.
No, they need to tell us about one.
Oh, you had, you need to tell us on number one what, what you have decided.
Specials, okay. Okay. Yeah, we did talk about that. Shortfalls due to.
Absences.
Due to absences?
Yes, there was absences with the other Board of Assessors. One of them was out.
Okay.
He was, he was sick and.
Oh, this is, this is back in the summer then, okay.
Continue, yes.
I, I think we were all in agreement for this, right? Someone want to entertain a motion to accept that article one on the special?
I will.
Okay. All in favor?
No, you can need a second.
Second, yeah, who's second, okay?
We're telling, we're telling them.
No matter what outside or not.
Okay, we're all, we're all in favor of that, Linda.
We're all in favor of it. Okay. Okay, our next one is to see if the town will, it's article two, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money from stabilization account to the assistant assessor wages account, or take any action relative there too. And the amount is $964.38. And I had talked to Carrie earlier in the day when I was in. And I talked about maybe there could be in our expenditure ledger, maybe, you know, there could be some money in there that we could use.
Yes, other variances, yeah.
For other accounts so that we don't have to go into stabilization. Didn't you tell me municipal fuel?
Yeah, there's, there's a bunch of money left in municipal fuel, but I don't know what will be coming for the, the next few bills, but I'm anticipating.
You're probably safe. I would get with, I would get with Cindy and take a look at what their store worth at the end of the year is. Um, Karen gets the bills, so.
Yeah, Karen, yeah, diesel.
Even with her, but I just.
Yeah, Karen gets a lot of money.
It's not the diesel, it's the, it's the gas.
The gas, this is for the gas.
There's money in both, both accounts.
Yeah.
Either one. Either one.
Yeah, so we would, we would wanna do a transfer.
I think...
Why wouldn't we do that as just a municipal, oh, because it's going across the department?
No, see what the, this is, yeah, see what this is. This is the cleanup best of all your accounts for the end of the year.
Oh, absolutely. I was just wondering why we weren't using just an emergency municipal transfer.
So that would, we could probably have that come out of the municipal fuel. Is that the account, Carrie?
Um, if it's not municipal fuel, there are other accounts that, that do have, um, excess that I'm sure we can...
So, do, do we wanna phrase, did, do we wanna phrase the article to transfer a sum of money to and just take the front account out of the warrant article?
No, the way we normally do it though, it would be to say, um, transfer a sum of money from the, uh, say municipal fuel account to the assistant assessor wage account. That is how we usually word these.
Okay.
Transfer a sum of money.
But can we put municipal fuel if we're not sure that that's the account you're gonna use?
There's money in both of those accounts.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only fuel talking, nine, what, not a thousand bucks here.
Yeah, so it comes from municipal fuel.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion?
Entertainer motion? Someone want a second to accept this? It's not gonna come out of stabilization though.
Right.
Okay, so...
Which is good. We had that question last night.
Do you wanna do that motion, Bob?
Yeah, he'll...
Alright.
You gonna second it?
I am.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Yeah.
We put it in motion.
Yeah, we'll put it, we will put this in the motion. We're just gonna put to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money to the, um...
Stabilization.
To the assistant assessors wage account, or take any action there too.
And then municipal fuel.
Then we'll put the municipal fuel. That will go into the motion. And the same thing, unlike even with number one, the thing that will say that it's coming from the consulting services to the assistant assessor wages, better amount of money too.
So, or...
Did you, um...
You guys good for two?
You guys...
Yeah, we're on board. When Yanis, we, we support it. As long as it doesn't come out of stabilization and you took care of that.
Okay, well, we didn't know really what it would come out of, so that's why we had put stabilization in. Okay, and this one is also to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money to the Board of Assessors salary account to pay for FY seventeen wage shortage, or take any relative action thereof. And that amount is two thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-one cents. The reason for this is when a new member was elected to the Board of Assessors in May of two thousand sixteen, the Board of Assessors neglected to pay him for a two-month period of May and June. The sum represents what he was owed for two-month period and what he was paid in March of two thousand seventeen when the issue was resolved. And this is, this is probably something, we could probably take that out of municipal fuel also.
I don't think there's another that.
No, so we'd have to find another account where we can take that out of... Well, we don't really have to, you know, figure it out tonight.
Right, if you wanna, if you wanna, you can look at those.
Yeah, we can look that up. Yeah, as long as we don't, I, I really don't care to take it out of stabilization. I'd like to leave the money there.
There's money in the treasures account under the tax title account.
Yeah.
We got eight thousand in there.
Eight thousand, yeah.
Yeah.
Carrie?
Yeah, there's like sixty-five hundred in there, is that?
Well, we saw, we saw about eight thousand.
That was, that was on April, as of April fourth, there was eight thousand.
Yeah, I think so.
What is it now?
But you still get, you can still take it out of there. I mean, that's up to you, Carrie, you know.
I'll, I'll look, Carrie, but, yeah.
So it's a possibility we can take it out of the treasurer's tax title?
Yes.
Okay, I'll put that in.
Yeah, just a question on that. Did, um, did you guys fund any money for tax title for next year?
We put ten back in again.
Mm-mm.
That would be the issue, so that's...
Yeah, we did.
We cut it back.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. We cut, we, we did put some money in it. We cut it back. I'm sorry. What did we put, thirty-five hide?
Thirty-five, I think.
Well, we...
Because we don't know that there's gonna be anybody there to be able to do tax titles.
We figured in November, we could put some more in if you need it.
Okay, alright. I, I agree with that one. So do you wanna take it out of tax title or you wanna wait, Carrie?
Um, tax title should be fine.
Okay, treasurer's tax title.
I'll just verify it.
Okay. Okay, and, uh, we'll...
So we have a motion.
We have a motion?
Yes.
Any discussion on it? Okay, on my favor?
So we want to entertain a motion to accept this? And they're not gonna take it out of stabilization, so. Okay?
Okay, second please.
Hello?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Alright, moving on to article four. To see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of money to the well testing account, or take any action there for, to. And they need, uh, one thousand five dollars. And the DE, and what the explanation on is, the DEP is required an extra test at the well site due to the presence of one point four dioxin found in the test. This is the third time in the last three years that the DEP has mandated this. It should be noted that this has been found consistently throughout the years in the testing, but only recently by the DEP required extra testing, which always shows the same results. Our board has asked for a waiver of this extra testing, and the DEP is reviewing our requests now. By the way, this element is not a threat, because there are no wells within five hundred feet of the landfill cap. If the DEP denies our request for a waiver, we will be requesting additional money on an annual basis for this account. So if this is waived, there's a possibility that we can pass over this article. So would this...
Will we know by town meeting if it'll be?
Yeah, I'm sure we will know by town meeting. We'll have, we'll keep up with Mike. No, we don't know?
I, I, dealing with those guys with water, you don't know when you're gonna get an answer, so you better be prepared to just be... Be prepared to pay the...
And if, and if we do, and if something happens, say, that they did...
Oh, yeah.
After the meeting, then we could just rescind the vote in the fall.
Or table it.
Or table it. So, Carrie, is this also something that we could take out of the treasurer's tax title? It's a...
I don't have exact figures in front of me, but, um, so three thousand, four, yeah, there's probably enough.
So eight thousand in there.
Well, no, that wasn't April. She's saying now it's only six.
Okay.
So, that's gonna be too much.
Do you wanna weigh it, Carrie?
Yeah, if you're happy with that one, maybe. I'm the one should just send that.
The new one, yeah. We just got the new one yesterday. Huh?
Yeah.
You just put fuel last night?
So this is another possibility, and if, and if they, and if we do vote the money, we can always rescind the vote in November, or whenever we have our spec, uh, the special in the fall, and just rescind the vote.
What is the reserve fund currently earmarked for between now and the end of the year at first?
No, no, reserve fund, no. Uh, Dave?
What?
Reserve fund?
How much is in there right now?
Well, I mean, what's in there right now is...
We had twenty-five thousand, but I mean...
There's nineteen thousand left.
Right.
Is there a plan for that nineteen thousand?
Uh, they're talking about using thirteen of it, I think, for the furnace.
So there'd be six thousand dollars left?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did he say fifteen? Just somewhere around fifteen for the furnace.
But the only thing I think is a good idea to leave that on, in there in case something does come up after town meeting, and we have to have our municipal transfers.
Good point.
So I wouldn't take it.
I think there's gonna be a little, there'll be places to get money from.
Yeah, so I wouldn't, I mean, I would leave...
We could take something out of the reserve fund.
I'll get to the accounts for sure before, way before the town meeting, but there's, there's money we can take out.
Yeah, there's a lot of accounts.
The biggest challenge is we've gotta publish the warrant fourteen days prior to town meeting. Is that correct?
Yep, something like that, yes.
So our, our drop dead date for having those accounts would be next week?
Yeah.
I'll prioritize it until tomorrow.
Okay.
Because we said we were gonna try to meet on the thirty-first again to go over. Will we have enough time?
That doesn't give you fourteen days.
Doesn't give you fourteen days.
That's what I'm saying, tonight.
By this Friday is fourteen. It'll be by this Friday.
Yeah, by this Friday is fourteen days. We might have to do a meeting Thursday to ratify the warrant.
And it has to be printed by Friday?
Well, a copy, a copy needs to be printed in Thursday.
A copy, just, this is what we're gonna print.
So that can be done here?
That could be done here. You can print out a copy, stick it on the, on the board.
In the post office.
Oh, you mean, yes, oh, you mean the warrant?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you were talking about printing the book itself. Oh, that's what I thought you were, oh, no, I know.
Just the legal stuff.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm saying, we need to make sure we're compliant.
Yes, a special needs to be printed at least ten days before, and an annual is seven.
Oh, so it's ten. That gives us four more days.
Ten days.
It's ten more days for a special. Yeah, Beth, I was town clerk for twenty-two years.
No, 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 I know.
It's got to be two.
I'm sorry. So it's ten, it's ten days.
It's ten days.
It's ten days, and then it's seven.
No, it's good discussion.
And then seven, seven for an annual.
Okay, four, ten days for a special.
I just wanna make sure we weren't...
Right. No, no, it's good that you brought it up.
Okay, we're just tricky, Karen, you have the date.
No.
Okay, they have to be posted by five-twenty-six.
Yeah, that's, is that Friday?
Is it?
Yeah, it's two weeks.
It might, might be going away, so we really have to get everything ready for Thursday.
And what about the holiday? That doesn't count, right? Oh, no, we're just counting, we're just counting days anyway. That won't affect, yeah.
No, what, no, that doesn't affect it with the holiday. The only thing a holiday affects is with the new open meeting law.
Mm-hmm.
But it doesn't affect the holiday. Carrie?
The tax title has enough to cover that, um, article four. Okay.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
Oh, so we do have to have...
So we're gonna print this tonight.
Yeah, this has to be printed tomorrow.
We'll get it done.
We will. Yeah, because the thing is, we don't have, we don't have to put in the money. We just have to put the articles themselves.
Or the, or the explanations either.
No, you don't need the explanations either. You just need the articles printed.
So we're at four. I have a motion that we approve, article four.
I'll make a second.
Motion to approve.
No, we already voted on that where it was coming from. We voted last night, and so, yeah. We're all set.
Well, yeah, but...
Yep.
We supported it.
Right, but we could redo it now.
Article five, sign next one.
No, we did it last night. We supported it last night.
Article five. To see if the town will transfer a sum of money to the transfer station expense account, or take any action relative there too. And they need five thousand dollars. And they, what the explanation is, we anticipate a shortage of about five thousand dollars in this account this year. We just paid Cosella Waste System six thousand one hundred and thirty dollars for April and only have seven thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars left in our expense account. The board anticipated the shortage when we met with the advisory board earlier this year. The shortage is due to the fact that we have increased expenses over the last two years regarding our electronic waste costs.
Yes.
And so I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, and the discussion, now the discussion is on it. Where are we gonna get the money for that? Where's the money gonna come from?
Um, do we know what we have, like, coming from municipal fuel expenses? Any idea?
I don't know. I have to look. I can let you know tomorrow. How much is left in? How much is in the equity?
Fifteen thousand with this.
Oh.
I think we got enough in here then.
So if we have enough...
What did you take, like, a thousand or whatever?
Uh, municipal fuel was a thousand.
So it's down to twelve?
Yes.
And five, I should, I should, seven should be okay. Yeah, I should think you should do it.
As we learned about Maysville.
You should be good, Carrie. You should be good.
Carrie, my recommendation would be to tend to put it down for fuel, and then to look at last year's expenditures in that account, um, you know, the, the May-June, and just make sure there's at least a fifteen percent buffer, 'cause I think we're a little higher than we were last year.
Right. If that one doesn't work, we'll, we'll figure it out another.
There's plenty in there, I think.
Yeah, now I talk, now, I, this is for the advisory board. Have they, have you talked to them to putting more money into this line item for next year?
So, so we, uh, we talked to them, and, uh, we, I believe we put a little money in for, for next year.
Okay.
But we wanted to address the reason why we're so much higher. Two years ago, it was eighteen hundred dollars to remove, uh, electronics, and this year it's, it's at or above ten thousand dollars. It's a huge difference. Uh, some of the issues that we're finding is that, uh, a couple of years ago, they had a company that was charged for six hundred dollars every time they came and emptied the dumpster. If they didn't empty at least three times, they're gonna charge us a six hundred dollar rental fee for the dumpster if we didn't have it emptied enough times. So, no one wanted to pay, uh, if we didn't reach that, so we changed companies. So instead of the old company coming for six hundred dollars and putting down a dumpster, pick up the new one, the new company now comes with a team of four guys. They open the southern dumpster, and it takes them four or five hours of dollies that manually load everything. So the loads are costing a lot of money. The loads themselves are costing between one thousand and two thousand dollars a load. Another problem, uh, we have down there is, uh, and we've addressed this with, with that as well, um, some of what we're, some of what we're being charged for things, uh, we don't charge enough when we take, you know, this really should be a self-sufficient dumpster. We charge people, we drop the electronics off, and we get paid. I remember we get charged. It really shouldn't be a wash. We, we should go pay, they should go pay for it themselves, but they didn't fees. One of the problems is they haven't raised the fees in a while, because they, they get personal backlash when people come to the landfill. It's as if they're personally attacking them. They feel, you know, like the town, you know, a lot of the time, we're, you know, we're forceful about them raising fees, which they are coming out on the new fees day, uh, July first. One of the other issues that I have noticed out of the dump, and I've watched this go on many times in the process there, ten years, is a gentleman hangs out down there and takes all the stuff out of the give or take that he wants to go resell and throws it in his car. But he also, if he finds electronics in the give or take section, he runs the cords off and puts them in a big bin in the back of his car, so he can strip them and make copper, and just picks up whatever the electronic thing is and walks through the electronic dumpster and just throws it in there himself. I watched him throw a carpet come in there one day, I watched him throw a microphone in there one day, I watched him put a boombox in there one day.
That's not what people are supposed to be doing down there.
Right. And I thought was up to them. I ran into Dan about it. Dan said he would talk to me about it. I spoke to Mike Siri about it. He also did talk about it. And the guy who was doing it is now running the controls of the dumpster down there. So now, I guess, it's unbearable now, I don't know. But I just saw him doing it two weeks ago. I watched. I set my car...
He's an employee, don't he?
He's an employee, but he's double-decked it then.
While my kids in the book been getting books, I sat in my car for fifteen minutes, and I watched him cut seven cords. People would drop some off, they'd look around, he cut it, he throws it in the dumpster, he puts a cord in back of his car. I went over there, and there was a radio sitting there with no cord. I had a cord that just plugs in, and he pulled the cord out and just threw it in the car and left the radio, it's still no cord. So I walked over, and I watched him do it, and I walked over and I go, "Did you just take the cord for this radio?" He was like, "Well, the cord's, you're wired on it definitely, but it's no good. It's got a little fray on it." So, but that'll be good for, you know, I was like, "Well, no one's gonna want it without the cord." You know, so he picked it up and walked away, and went and threw it in the electronics. He just throws the electronics down, and throws it away.
Well, he shouldn't be down there for his own personal reasons.
That's costing us money, yeah.
You think about all those electronics, like, for paying, for every piece of electronics that we're not getting money for to come in, and now they're getting thrown in there, I would guarantee, and I, I mean, I, I have no doubt to back this up, but just from what I've seen of him, watching this guy, this guy's personally costing this town money.
Yeah, of course he is.
You know? So I have talked to Dan and Mike about him. They've all said they were gonna talk to him, but like I said, I went there two weeks ago, and he's in, running the controls now, so I don't even know what's going on. But, uh, that, I think that should be, there's gotta be a stop to that, you know? Uh, so, after speaking with Mike Siri, a couple of weeks ago, I spoke to, we spoke to him last night.
Last night we talked to him.
He has reached out to the original company that we were using, and he's waiting for a response back from them. He wants to go back to the original company. Because we are incurring more electronics as people, you know, more and more and more are switching over their electronics at home. They're getting newer computers. The older computers are bigger. They're getting new TVs, and some people still have those old big bulky TVs. They come along wrong. So as people are upgrading their electronics in their life, we're starting to take on more electronics at the landfill. So, either way, it's gonna, we are taking on more loads. But, uh, so Mike is now trying to get back to the original company, and hopefully they'll chop way back down and give them back.
And I think, uh, I think tomorrow, I'll talk to Mike about that gentleman that's doing that down there with the, with the list. So he shouldn't be doing that.
So the other issue that we have is that we continue, and we'll continue to have it, is that when we did the Earth Day, I, I picked, personally picked up three TVs that were over, that were over the side on Rice Corner Cross.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's...
And there was another half dozen that were on, uh, Mill Street.
And that's one of the other issues that, that, that we did discuss, Dan and I, or Dan and the board discussed. Is, you know, he said, it's kind of a catch-22 if you raise prices, people just throw stuff on the side of the road. You know, and, and, you know, it's like, well, they're gonna throw it anyways, but, yeah, we understand, you know.
But if they get caught, they can be fined.
Right.
Catching them is the...
He said that is, that is an issue too, is that, you know, they didn't want it because they didn't want the litter to go in.
And maybe I'm special, but they charge me if I leave a working TV in the give and take, just because it might wind up in the electronics bill.
Well, that's, that's what we discussed last night.
In that, well.
It should be that, right?
I'm just saying.
For everyone.
You mean, you're not kidding? You're not kidding?
No, I did say.
They'll charge it, yes.
If you leave it in the give and take.
Yep.
I think that should, it should be, yeah.
Even for, I didn't think they charged.
Yeah, so, 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 so they were, so, so they do sometimes charge for that.
Well, it's gotta be more consistent.
Okay, guys.
Okay.
I'd say.
Okay, I guess this is it.
All right.
We're good?
We wanna, yeah, we're good? Did you take it?
We voted last, we voted last night to support this.
Okay, all right, uh, okay. And so this is it, so I think we'll close the wall.
Now, you guys got all the angles, and I gave you those.
So I'd like a motion to entertain, to close the wall.
I put the buys on.
You have that motion?
Second.
I'm in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so that's all done. See, see here. Did we all get this from Marie, if we wanted to?
I'll let your email that you, um, update.
It's a, it's an updated email from, um.
But there's more that this, that this.
At the end, at the end, yeah.
All right, I'd like to entertain a motion to reopen the annual town meeting.
You have that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're gonna, 'cause we have a couple here to discuss.
We weren't gonna vote these as a block because we need some things to be changed.
Okay. Do we wanna go over the ones that we're adding first?
No, just go right to the top. Let's go right.
We got a question on.
Oh, go right through it, okay, all right, we'll.
Thirteen, I believe it was.
Eleven, I saw.
Eleven.
And thirteen.
Eleven.
So eleven's the first one?
Bless you.
Bless you.
Eleven, to see if the town will authorize or something.
We were under the understanding that this was defunct.
Without a treasurer, we can't verify whether or not the revolving fund that supports this, even though the highway, regional highway cooperative equipment, whole equipment is not necessarily still an active entity, the revolving fund may still exist. And with that, we need to find out where the funds are and find out what the procedures are for, um.
Cindy said that, she said there wasn't, was an.
Well, Cindy may have, but until we've got our books straightened out and we've verified what money the treasurer has where, we can't, we can't basically make this article go away until we've validated our, if there's a penny.
We want it to go away.
But I, regardless of how we feel about it, that, that needs to stay on there until we clarify i- if any funds exist in any account anywhere, before we decommission it. So it hurts the, it hurts the town not at all, because we don't put any money in a revolving fund. A revolving fund by definition is self-supported by any fees collected.
Yeah, coming in and going out.
So it does nothing to us or for us to, to get rid of it, to get rid of it puts us at risk. To leave it there does no harm, so let's leave it there.
But it is estimated that this will eventually be, be done away with.
I think with the reconcile, reconciliation that, that I understand the accountant to be trying to do with all the accounts, that would be part of the account cleanup that would go on between those offices.
Yep.
Imagine that we would have to have all of those items on fall.
We're, we're gonna have a massive fall.
Yeah, we are, because we don't know, so I think we're gonna have to pass over a lot of these.
We're gonna have to pass over most everything, quite frankly, 'cause.
I mean, we can't, well, we'll have to see.
Kayla, you need a shovel, you need a shovel, let me know.
Okay. On Article thirteen here, I talked to Cindy about this this morning. She says basically what this is, and she says it could almost, didn't she say it could be almost passed over this morning? Because she just wants people to see just how much money is spent in plowing private roads. It's fifteen thousand dollars, that's how much is spent.
And I wanna make the point that I want people to come before ground freezes, that their road is okay, and that all the people on the road say that they wanna do this. Because last year, the person I had to say no to was the guy at the other end of the road said no.
Said no what?
'Cause he didn't want the town on his road.
No, he didn't want the town on.
So we've got one lady at one end that needed to help, the guy at the end of it, why they don't get along, I don't know. The reality was, I had to tell that lady no, that the answer was no.
Oh, well.
And so this is to educate those kinds of folks to get along.
I, I, unfortunately, I don't think it serves that purpose.
On reason.
I think it leaves it open to being voted on the floor to put fifteen thousand dollars.
No, she told me that there's fifteen thousand already in there.
Oh, it is.
It's in the, it's in the seventy-five thousand, and it's snowing ice.
I get up in the night, do my rant, you guys vote to table, it's table. I don't have a problem with that.
Oh, yeah, no, this is why she's doing this.
Exactly.
But that's not.
And then it just goes back to a dollar.
That's not us voting to table it.
Yeah.
This has to go before the town?
Sure, but we, we leaders of the town are gonna say.
On the bottom floor, he made, he, if you remember last time when he talked to us about it, he said, to your point, that he just wanted the people to.
Yeah, that's what it was, that's what Cindy said.
He would change it to a dollar on the floor.
He would change it to a dollar on the floor. He just wants to pay, have people understand just how much money goes into plowing private roads. That's the only reason for this.
Can I ask a question? I mean, people that live on private roads are part of this community. I mean, when do we get a figure on how much it's gonna cost to do Rice Corner, Allen Road and Lake Road?
Exactly. You're singling out private.
They're still paying the same amount of taxes as the rest of us.
That, that's not.
Why is it such a big deal in the town of Brookfield, is what I'm trying to get an answer to.
It's a big deal, it's a lot of town, actually.
Yeah, it's a lot, it's a.
But I mean, we can't.
There's a big risk to, one of the biggest challenges with the, with the towns, and I, and I don't know if we've voted to accept certain portions of Mass General Law, but the, if the maintenance on those roads is not adequate, and if the, and if the roads aren't reviewed, you try to plow some of the roads that are in certain condition, if the town breaks the plow on their own road, that's a public road that we've been paying the maintenance on, it's one thing. When we start breaking plows on, on private roads, it's a, it's a totally separate thing.
No, it's still, it's still part of the town.
But this, but this was already covered.
It's part of the town.
In a past meeting, correct, but that people have to supply, the, they have to sign a paper. The roads have to be examined, and so if those roads are not up to snuff, and there's agreements haven't been signed, it won't be done. That's.
I have one vote, and I'm voting that we keep this article. So, so let's back to the board.
I think, I, I'd love to keep this on too.
Now, it shouldn't be in the block article, so.
No, I, I didn't think it was in the block articles.
Well, that was because it was a dollar, and it's been this way for years.
Right.
So I think we should.
Years and years and years it's been there.
So take it out of the, take it out.
I would, can I take it out of the block?
So we're gonna have to switch the, no, oh, please take it out since it's the last one.
Yeah, just take it out.
Okay, so we'll stop the block at twelve.
So selectmen, yes. Advisory board?
No.
Nope.
We had a dollar, we just put a dollar into it.
That's fine. What's next?
All right, the next one here is fourteen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer or borrow a sum of money for the library building maintenance account. And that amount of money is seven thousand four hundred. And this is to pay an architect required by the Mass Historical Society for the Mass Preservation Project Funds, grant MPPF.
Yep.
And it says we have saved twelve thou- twelve thousand dollars over several years, you have years. And applied for this smashing fund grant to improve the front facade of the library. The gargoyle, the downspout, and the window restoration. The trustees and staff continue to prioritize upgrades, maintenance to the town's historic, historic buildings. And already it said for selectmen, we.
That we approved it.
And we approved it.
Yeah, she gave, she gave us a good presentation and explained it very well.
And I helped to write the grant, and I feel good about it.
Okay, so the only, okay, so why don't we then skip on to sixteen? Okay, sixteen. To see if the town will vote to amend Chapter fifteen of the Personnel Bylaws, Section two, mandatory classification to include the position of assistant treasurer or take any action relative there too. The reason that we are doing this, in case we have another problem, like, you know, an instant came up like we just had this last time, where we had to take, the, the, um, financial clerk was appointed by the treasurer and the board of selectmen to be the, the assistant treasurer. And, um, I think this is a good idea. If something comes up again, and if they're absent for any period of time, you have the assistant treasurer to step in and do this position. Because if you don't have this, then, you know, we can't do anything. The assistant assessor, I mean, the assistant treasurer can have her name, she's bonded. She has her name on all of the bank accounts, and she can, has the, uh, she can sign checks, expenses, and we need that backup if this ever happens to us again. Or say if they're out for some time for a leave of absence or something. And we thought it was a good idea to do this.
Well, that could happen with any position, though. So then, rather than having clerks, then you need an assistant tax collector, then you need an assistant, well, you could use the same rationale.
This is a, but this is a limit, but this is eliminating the financial clerk for this position.
That's not, but that's not my point. The point is that you could, you could use that same logic with any other department that now has a clerk.
Well, but this is.
Well, what if so-and-so goes out?
But this is a very important department.
And so is, say, accounting.
All departments are important.
I don't have clerk even, so.
Right, no, no, but I'm just saying, you know.
All departments are important.
Oh, I understand that, but the treasury is a very, 'cause she's the one, she's the one, I mean, does the paycheck.
It's the most, it's the most technical, day-to-day financial requirement that we have as an entity, but no disrespect to Carrie.
No, 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 I didn't mean that, Carrie, I didn't mean anything.
If Carrie walked out on us tomorrow, not that she's going to.
I won't let her.
Well, anyway, um, we could go tomorrow and go to like an accounting service like what the town of Sunderland uses and say, "Hey, can you come in and, and fill our town accountant role until we hire somebody?"
But the thing is, it's the cost.
Well, well, it would be outrageously expensive, don't get me wrong.
Yeah, we are checked into that.
Don't, don't, don't get me wrong. I'm not saying we would ever wanna do that. I'm saying if the accountant did that tomorrow, it's not an issue. Right now, with the treasurer, with the names having to be on the accounts and the actual physical bonding and movement of money.
She's already been bonded.
It's the most critical player in that role. And technically, technically, it is, it is the most difficult position when you have it vacant, okay? There's a lot of good reason to have only clerks for the other financial people, or have shared municipal clerks that are trained and, that are cross-trained in all of the financial departments.
Yeah, just leave it to them, though.
Yeah.
Okay, they're.
We're already supporting.
We're already supporting this.
The other part of it was that, um, there's training necessary for this.
Yep.
Okay, and, and that's, we understand that.
The school.
But that would, um, her current position, I don't know if it's seventeen, whatever, um, and it's gonna jump to twenty-two. When, when, at what point will it change to twenty-two dollars an hour? After she's received her education and certification? Why would you give someone who's not?
The assistant does not have to be certified.
Well, she has to receive, she has to be educated, though.
Yeah, she is going to go to school, but we did the step and the grade on this last week. I, I wrote you about that, Marie. I sent that email to you.
Well, she came in and said twenty-two dollars.
Yes, that's what it will be.
Beep, she's not.
Because she is, she, she is.
Because of her step in grade.
Because of her step in grade and the responsibility that comes along with this position, we have a whole thing that we go through. We go through, it says experience, and it says, um, experiences, I'm trying to think of some different things that are on that. The chart that we have to go through. And it tells the job duties, it's practically everything that the treasurer has to do, that this person has to do in her absence. And so she's going to school for this this summer.
Okay, now, the point that our board had was, that's all fine and dandy, but right now, she is not qualified to take over as a treasurer to get that increase in her pay. That's what our board came up with. You, you wanna give her an increase now before she's qualified?
It's not about the person, it's about creating the position so we can legally put the person in it.
That's right.
Okay, that's fine, but then, okay, so when do you, when do you, when do you put the increase?
When does she start this position?
Oh, this, this position, right now, she is getting her, right now, she's getting the same rate of pay. As she was getting as the financial clerk. This would start July first.
That's what I mean.
That's our point, Linda. She's, she's not qualified to step in as a treasurer.
Well, she has right now, she's very qualified.
She's not qualified at this time.
Well, if we didn't think she was qualified, I don't think we would've put her in there.
The townspeople can vote, I'm just giving us, I'm just giving you our point of view.
But this doesn't mean just the person. We could have a whole new person come in and take this position.
That's the important thing, is the person.
Right, you're gonna get a treasurer, what, and within the month?
Cross our fingers.
We're hoping, but what I'm saying, though, with this, if this, the assistant treasurer, it doesn't mean it could even be the person that we have in there. If she decides she doesn't wanna do it, and you hire another person, this is for another person coming in.
Okay, so once we get another person in here, we're gonna have a, a treasurer who's working twenty-four hours, and then we're gonna be having an assistant.
Sixteen.
At, at, at sixteen hours at that pay rate. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, you're saying that's gonna cost, okay. I, I see your point, but I'm just saying it's also gonna be costly to the town.
Absolutely.
It's got, it's, it's an important position, no offense, Carrie.
There are a lot of stuff has to go.
Every department, every other department stops.
Yeah, every other department stops.
So that's how important this position is.
And when we did appoint her, we had full approval of town council to do it, even though we didn't have.
Okay.
That position in, 'cause she said we needed this position.
For the functioning of the town.
Yeah.
Then I'm just wondering why we haven't had it in the past. This town is how many years old? This structure has been in place for how long? And, and they've gotten by without this position?
And why, and we're gonna wait another year to get an audit done?
Yeah, and, yeah, and, and it's never, it happened well, and quite frankly, we're gonna be very lucky if we don't wind up, because of the current vacancy in the treasurer's office, i- if we don't wind up with a, a fairly significant, you know, problem with cash flow.
No, we've, we've had this problem before. We've been, we've been over this road before. Nothing's new.
It's, it's worse.
Um.
We, okay, okay, we're gonna move on to seventeen.
So who signs the paychecks in the absence of a treasurer?
That's why we had, that's why we, that's why we had to appoint a assistant treasurer.
But now, but now, this isn't, that's not till July.
No, no, she's in, she's in spot now. We put her in, when was the date, Karen, we put her in? I can't remember.
Four weeks ago.
In March. We put her in place in March.
Because of the fact that town council said that, it, it's one of these things, it's kind of like when there was only five people on advisory, three people constitutes a quorum, even though it's not, okay?
We, we get it, we get it.
As a small town, we had to be able to do business. KMP said we were legal.
Yeah, she, they said we were legal to do it as long as we did not pay her any more money for this position right now. And then she said we should adopt this position at the annual town meeting, and we needed somebody. She has her name now. Um, she signs the payroll checks, she can do expenses, she can do all kind of money transfers, she can go to the bank. And without having this person in place, we can't do any of that.
We, we understand that side of it, Linda.
So this is why.
We made our side too, okay.
This is why we support this article.
So the advisory board's not supporting it?
Well, we, we support it, we just wanted, before the pay got in, we wanted the person to be schooled and, and, and qualified, that's all.
But the question is not the rate of pay.
Exactly.
It's not.
The question is that, obviously, the position.
Well, you, but you just.
But you have to take into consideration.
Linda just said that you're gonna drop the position and the pay will increase, the pay will change July first.
Yes, because we did, we did a grade, we did a step and a grade, and this is where it falls.
But the hourly pay does, does affect the budget. That's why we're taking it into consideration.
Right, that's why we just, right.
So it's money, so.
So you stand, do you support it or not?
They.
Um, you can take a vote.
You guys wanna revote, it's, it's up to you guys. I mean, we voted last night, but guys wanna vote again? I'll entertain it if you wanna, if you wanna do it.
Support it.
Hmm?
Vote to support, yeah.
You're gonna vote, you're making a motion to support it?
One second, is it, all right, discussion?
Oh, not for support, eh?
True support.
I'm not for.
Okay.
R B, no.
Not either, not, not, not.
G H, no.
I get, I like the position, I like the position, but I think the page should follow after the qualification, the qualification place.
After the training?
I support.
Um.
No.
Three, three.
You support it? And?
No.
Bobby was no.
Bobby is no, Davis no, Tony is yes.
Seventeen here.
William is yes.
What?
They have here.
R F, yes.
For the petition?
Time fail.
They said the language.
So you got one, two, three, four, five.
It's all else.
It has to be.
So what is it, three to three?
Yeah, three, three fails.
Three, three fails.
Well, no, it, the tax, if it's gonna affect the tax one way or another, if you, it's just a matter of when she gets the money. The, the education is gonna occur this summer?
She said after three years.
Up to, it's gonna take up to three years.
And she, I'm sure that, I'm sure she probably could be certified, and that's what we're asking with the new one coming in, even a new treasurer. We want them within three years to be certified.
That's three years. I'm just, that's the other thing, that's a really long time to be paying somebody that kind of money that's not certified.
Well, she's been doing the job now, and she's doing a good job, so.
I think we may be getting a little confused here.
You are.
The adoption of.
Uh, it is, it is, but.
What it is, it's the adoption, we have to do this.
But the money follows it, is all we're saying, so.
So we're just gonna get on the town floor and just say.
Yeah, just, yeah.
The lawyer says do this, we're gonna do it.
She'll be there to back us up.
That, no, that's, that's fine, we're just giving you our take, that's all. I mean, how the town voters vote, that's, I don't have a problem either way, but I'm just telling you how, how we're viewing it.
Now, here I notice.
The lawyer says to do something, and you're gonna tell us, oh, okay, I get it.
Okay.
All right, now on seventeen, I noticed here that you changed it to.
Two, three, yes, three, no.
Fails.
Okay, so you don't support it?
Okay, I noticed here on Article seventeen, that you said the article should read Long Hill. We can't put Long Hill because the way the petition came in, it says Rice Corner Road, and it can be amended on the floor.
The, the, the article itself is rife with errors in, in the town farmer.
Occasions.
Yeah.
It should say Long Hill.
But this is how it, but this is how it came in.
Initiative, understood.
So we have to.
Well, then we can't support it, because.
Yeah, we won't support it as it's written.
Okay.
So we'll make the amendment then, right, Linda, then we'll, then we'll be fine. The intent is here, we just got the wrong road there.
Um.
Correct? The support is well-written.
Yeah, so we need to vote?
We already voted it last night, maybe just the wording was wrong.
Well, then.
But we voted, we were on board with it.
So you support it?
Do we support it?
We support it, yeah, as long as you make the amendment on that, on the, correction on the road.
So select board, motion to accept.
Right, guys, it's, it's just the wording was wrong.
Needs an amendment.
I'll make the motion to accept the article.
In a second.
I'm in favor?
As written.
As written, Beth?
Well, you have to do it as written, because it's a decision.
Okay, then you're gonna make the amendment, okay, all right.
That's the only way we can accept it, regardless of the errors.
Yeah, I'd like to just show the amendment, we'll amend it.
Okay. All right, now, we have article eighteen, no, our next one, alrighty.
Yeah, eighteen.
Eighteen, okay, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate transfer or borrow sum of money to do the work at the fire station. Okay, the brick stations, main, okay, you, so you want me to, uh, read out this whole purpose?
No, this is the, this is Jeff Taylor telling you to fix it.
Yeah, but right here, though, Peter had added on, um, that he needs to replace a stove, and we didn't hear that before.
Actually, that, he spoke to that the last time when he was in front of us, yep, last meeting.
Smile and say yes.
He did, oh, I didn't, I didn't hear you say that you want, okay.
Yeah, I did.
So it's all included, so-
That's all included, and the advisory, the advi- okay, all right.
I make a motion that we approve.
Yeah, I will make that, I'll second.
I'll second.
I'll second.
There you go.
Any, any discussion on it?
No.
Okay.
Okay, the, the advisory board, um, it came up last night, and I brought it up, um, that I feel that, um, this expense should be split with, um, the ambulance, since that department takes up fifty percent of the building. And this is not unheard of, if you go back to the two thousand and eight warrant, you'd see that during that time, they paid a portion of the bill for work done on the firehouse as well. So, and that, I haven't checked the, um, warrants since then, between two thousand and eight and now, to see what the other history is, um, but I don't think that's unreasonable, considering their house there as well. And technically, the people on duty for ambulance are actually there, you know, more hours than actual firefighters are there, except for training or-
What, does the electrical panel service, what, the ten thousand dollars, which is the primary portion of, of the repair services, what portion of the building?
The entire brick building.
The entire brick building.
Which is the firehouse, pretty much, right, Pete?
It's the entire brick building, which is the fire station, the ambulance garage, the emergency management office-
Okay.
The rabies clinic. I'll have one.
So, why split it? This is paperwork.
Why split it?
Yeah.
Because it's where the money comes from, that matters.
It's coming from the town.
It, it is, well, the ambulance has their own account-
Yeah.
-that they can take money out of. It, it's been done before.
I didn't say it wasn't done before, I'm just saying, what does it matter?
Precedent, well, why did it matter in two thousand and eight?
What did we do in two thousand and eight?
I don't have the thing in front of me, but, um, a portion of some repairs that were done came out of that account. So I'm just suggesting, we could do that again. I mean, you're looking at, you know-
We're just, we figured some of it would come out of the amb- the ambulance, um, account, 'cause, you know, you guys are using half the building, and the other are using half, that's, that's all.
It's not half.
Well, you wanna say-
Well, we're, we're still, we're still gonna have to sort out what the motions are gonna read, so honestly, this, this portion of this-
We were behind you, but, we were just trying to figure out if we could get some, so we didn't use some of the money, that's all.
All right, but our purpose tonight is to decide if we support the article or not, right?
The electrical inspector says do it, so-
Yeah, if the electrical inspector says do it, you gotta do it.
And we've, we've already said that we wanted this, and so it really-
But the article does say raise appropriate transfer or borrow, so it's asking for source of funds.
And we were just weighing in on where, would be kind of an idea of getting some of the money out, out of the ambulance account, that's all. So we su- we supported the, we su- we supported the thing.
Okay, and then on nineteen, you had-
You are supporting, is that what I hear?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, on nineteen, there was another question on this also, by the advisory board, I have a question also, um, I talked to a member of the, um, capital improvement committee today, and he said, before we go voting on this, he feels that this amount of two hundred thousand, he feels this needs to go before the capital improvement committee, and he said, right now, he says, we also have mutual aid too, for this, until, he said, they get back into this committee and actually start discussing what's gonna go on.
That's what I mentioned on our last meeting, it should go before that board, we need more discussion.
Yeah, we had a member come in today, and, um-
Okay.
-we spoke about this.
Wow, we got someone that agrees with me.
So.
Well, I also believe that it was gonna be a portion of money.
It was maybe twenty thousand last meeting, that, that was why we questioned it last night, and went through this, because-
Fleet account.
The last thing was twenty thousand in fleet account, and then this came in, it was two hundred thousand.
Correct.
Twenty thousand dollars will buy half a police cruiser, so if we put twenty thousand dollars in a year, then probably about twenty-four years, we could buy a fire truck.
No, I, I understand, I understand what you're thinking, Pete, I do.
It needs to go before this-
The work maybe, not the painting.
It needs to go in front of the capital planning, it's a major expense.
I said exactly that to Linda when we discussed it at a select meetings meeting, that I said twenty thousand is nothing, and we're gonna need another hundred eighty to make it two hundred. So I did say that to her, so don't put words in my mouth that I didn't say. And I'm on board with, yeah, I'm on board getting money set aside to get another truck. But it's just how we do it, we should have more discussion, is what I said.
Twenty thousand, and the capital improvement committee just got reinstated, we want years by having a file, by not having one, and now use it as a shield to not move the town forward.
It's not a shield, Peter, I was, he spoke to me about this today, one of the members, because he said, we were already, like, last year, he says, we already bought two, two brand-new vehicles.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna have some pretty significant discussions, probably, and a lot of the capital-
Expenditures.
-expenditures are gonna have to move to the fall anyway, so rather than get into, uh, superfluous discussion over-
May we?
-that piece of it, let's just, it, we could do one of two things, with, I, I, I would recommend leaving it on, so that people understand that we do have this potential expenditure upcoming, um, and then pass it over at the meeting, until we actually have better visibility on, on where we are fiscally.
Makes sense.
Okay, I have a motion to, um-
Leave it on.
To leave it on.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to leave it on.
In a second.
All in favor?
All right.
No.
We, we voted no yesterday last night, just, I mean, just the way it's worded, the two hundred thousand, raise and appropriate, so to us, that means-
Yeah.
Well, at least too much open.
Right.
Now, we also have a question here, all the other ones, we've all voted here, support most of the articles here, now, the next one is-
Twenty.
Twenty, or twenty-eight?
No, she's got twenty-eight here.
Oh, she has twenty-eight, but we're going to do this in that piece, so we're on, is this one?
Oh, well, oh, we're gonna go over them, 'cause like, I thought-
Yeah, you don't want to go over them?
Yeah, we've already said-
Oh, we already did those.
We already did this, Karen, yes.
We don't have to go over them.
We're not gonna go over them, um, 'cause I noticed twenty-eight is, is another one.
Well, twenty-four, did the advisory board support that or not? That's the one, that's what's in that truck.
We were split on the vote.
So it's announced.
So we support it, and they don't.
They don't.
Okay, all right.
Oh, I take that back, we did, we, yeah, we did support it, 'cause it was here in the water department's meeting, so, their own entity.
Yeah. All right, so on-
Although spending, even though it's their own entity, spending does affect, or could affect-
The water users.
The people that use the water and get billed, so, but-
We had a good discussion on it.
It was very good, Bob, it was very nice.
Okay, okay, now we're on to twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight?
Yep, that's another one that you talked about, FEMA money to fleet account, you said the advisory board does not support this action, and wants the funds to go towards snow and ice deficit, since it was money used for snow event.
'Cause the money that, the money that was expended to, to, to do what we had to do back in all fifteen, then it should go back into the, it should go back into the snow and ice account, 'cause that's where the money came from originally. So we figured it should go back, take that right off the top of the deficit when we get into the annual town meeting. That was our thinking.
Yeah, it's, it's loaded on.
And actually, my, my question is actually for Carrie, is that, and, and it may be something that we need to check with D O R, 'cause my experience has been, when we get a check back from FEMA, say, we get a check back from FEMA this year, not until we file for free cash related to receipts in this year, i.e. sometime next fall, or, or early spring next year, that's when we can actually allocate those funds, so I don't know that either of these articles or recommendations is even technically feasible under mass general law. I don't see the, I don't have a copy of the article here, um, but-
I think we were gonna ask Cindy to confirm that.
Are you referring to twenty-seven too, Beth? You're referring to twenty-eight, twenty-seven and twenty-nine?
I'm, I'm referring to all of them that talk about taking money from the general fund to put anywhere based on checks that were received in the current fiscal year.
Yep, twenty-seven and twenty-eight, yep.
From fiscal fifteen.
Right.
Yes and no.
That's where it came from.
Because, because, even though, but even though it comes from fifteen, the check itself was received to the town in this year.
Yeah.
December thirty-first of sixteen.
That's Cindy confirming.
Yeah.
And that's why we can should be able to vote it in.
That's Cindy confirming, and then we'll just move on.
We'll talk to Cindy about that. Okay, twenty-eight, and now we have, um-
Well, let me ask one question before we move on, if I may, Linda, if, if we can do, move the money, whatever, how, that's our question, is are you gonna move, where are you gonna move the money to?
We-
We're saying back into snow and ice.
We are saying back into snow and ice.
Yeah, twenty-eight.
For twenty-eight.
And the question that was left open last time was whether or not you could in fact do that, back to the snow and ice, and we don't, I don't think we have an answer to that question.
We have to find that out.
Okay, okay, so we, where can we get a solid answer?
I will contact D O R before.
Okay, and then let me know, Carrie? Okay.
I understand, and that we couldn't-
And then probably the same thing.
Replace twenty-nine.
Would be the same thing.
The same thing for twenty-seven also, wouldn't it?
Twenty-seven, yeah.
'Cause that's in the general fund.
Yeah, but that's not snow.
Oh, but that's not snow.
No, 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 I understand that.
So it's just twenty-eight, and whether or not you can take it out of the snow, cook it in snow.
Yeah.
And I understood you couldn't.
You understand we couldn't?
The last time I understood, and that's why we asked the question.
Twenty-seven gonna be taken from the general fund?
Yeah, the general fund, that's another one too, we talked about today, Karen and I, if, are we gonna take on twenty-seven, that is gonna come from the general fund, or do we have some other fund that we could take this out of? This is article-
General fund, article twenty-seven.
You just got thrown under the bus.
I remember, I said, hey, what happened, happened.
'Cause we usually don't transfer money out of the general fund.
Well, I know, that's why I questioned all of those, because of that exact reason.
And that's how, that's how the highway had written them up.
Training, training course, employment.
I, I would think we should find that money-
And I tapped it off.
Yeah, find money elsewhere.
Yes, the, general fund isn't really-
No.
Yeah, and actually, that, that article should just be raise appropriate transfer or borrow.
Yeah.
Which article are we looking at? I got this one.
Twenty-seven.
Or we could see if we have some money in an account that we could take for that.
Yeah, and, and in essence, I think, I think, if I recall, 'cause I had, I did have a conversation, they were trying to point out that they were bringing money back in, and they were trying to get the money back in to support this-
The vehicles.
The vehicles, in essence, so the money came from the vehicles, put it back into the vehicles, but I think we run into the same problem with that, where the check came in this year-
Yeah, it said the money-
It can't be, it can't be allocated.
It said that the money was obtained from the sale of the nineteen eighty Mack truck.
Right, so, so, you could say raise appropriate transfer or borrow, but it wouldn't be coming from the general fund.
No, it wouldn't come from the general fund, it would have to come from something else.
And I think what we probably just need to do is, if we're gonna do any article for fleet account, would be a, a single consolidated fleet account article.
Madam Chair, a question for clarification, is the amount twenty-five seventy or twenty-seven fifty, and I have twenty-seven?
Oh, it's two thousand five hundred and seventy dollars.
Thank you.
Good job, Beth.
Okay, so we're not gonna do anything with that tonight, anyway?
Twenty-eight now.
Well, if nothing else, at least let's change the verbiage to raise appropriate transfer or borrow, a, a sum of money, yeah.
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 And then the motion comes in.
Where we, where we figure out where it's coming from and all that, so get the terms out of there.
Yeah, raising appropriate, yeah.
Right. And that's how they came in, and that's how I just did it, this is just a draft.
She just said it so we could see this tonight, because she knows that this doesn't go in.
I'm good.
Okay, twenty-nine, we support-
Twenty-nine to one ton.
They don't have twen- oh, they don't, they, okay, you don't support number twenty-nine?
That's why I have to directly correlate with what are about this eighteen thousand dollars, which would go in the snow ice to take down the deficit, or goes to, because the way this is written, this may be totally, if it goes to snow ice, then that would be totally different.
Correct.
So that's gonna be-
That's gonna, yeah, um, that's gonna have to-
And we have to get, yeah, all right, well, just we have a little bit of time.
Do we know, do we know what's gonna happen with that nineteen ninety-seven?
Parts truck.
Um, because in the past-
This doesn't have to go up.
Right, we have a little bit of time too.
It won't pass inspection.
Well, that particular truck, though, in the past-
Five years ago, they said the same thing.
Was supposed to be given, yeah, the same thing was said a few years ago, and then it was gonna be given to cemetery, so they could tool around-
No.
On it, well, I'm just saying, past history.
They said they didn't want it.
And then it never happened, and then they kept it, and now it's like, being, no, no, now-
We're replacing it the second time.
They, they said-
We're replacing it the second time.
I do recall reading, though, that, yeah, it says right there, that they use it for patching potholes, so, it, you can't then, if it's not, uh-
It is, at this point, not rose, roadworthy.
So, what, we planning on investing money in and again to make it roadworthy?
And their recommendation was not to invest in it to make it roadworthy.
But if we went to the town already and asked them to replace this truck, and they did, how can we go to the town and ask them to replace the same truck again?
No, you're asking for another truck.
And this is saying to replace the same truck that's already replaced?
It's buying a truck.
I understand that, Clarence, but, but we as a board here, we, we like to get some trust from our employees.
So, I guess, I guess the question is, is should there be two one tons or three one tons in the town?
No, should there be three, or should there be four?
No.
Or maybe it's supposed to be two. There was supposed to be two originally.
We'll see, we'll see.
Two trucks originally, and the taxpayers in this town got duped five years ago, and now we're doing the same thing again now.
No, the question is-
I don't think this is being duped, you're asking them to do something.
As a taxpayer that was there, there were two articles on that town meeting, one was to buy a brand new one ton, one was to appropriate a sum of money to repair the ninety-seven. Both of those passed, both those motions were read, clearly understood by the audience, probably including yourself, and both passed to buy a new truck and put money into the ninety-seven. In no time did the town, was the town led to believe that the ninety-seven was going away. This stuff about the cemetery, the cemetery commissioners knew nothing about that, that they were supposed to get. So, the town voted to buy a new truck and put money into this ninety-seven. Now, this ninety-seven is not worth putting money into, so, as it says, to replace it.
But that's-
I wasn't there then? Well, no, I'm going off of what Ernie told me himself when we said it last week. I turned around and said to him, the last truck that we got, didn't that replace the ninety-seven? He said, yes. And I said, so we're replacing again? He said, yep. I said, okay. That's where I got the information from. That's, 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 I wasn't there, so I don't know. I was just asking everybody that everything, that's what he was doing. There were two articles on that, both related, I wondered, to buy a new truck, and I don't think the bourbon was to replace the ninety-seven, because that would always be a problem, but to buy a new one ton, and also to put money into the ninety-seven, and both those passed.
I remember that, I remember they were going to get drunk it, or, and then they were, the cemetery spoke up and they wanted it.
Well, I've asked for the warrants to-
We'll get the one.
From two thousand and eight to the present, and we can look for that, we can look at it.
We still have a little time, because this doesn't have to post until seven thirty.
Okay.
So, Carrie says she has to leave, so, Carrie says she has to leave, so anything else you can just ask her, you can ask.
You can send your beaming out.
Well, that's okay, Carrie.
I just wanted to ask an eight-thirty client, and I put him off long enough.
Okay, no problem.
You were trooper, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We appreciate you coming, Carrie. So, we still have time to get some answers on this.
Okay, so that's open.
What's next, Madam Chair?
Okay, we have a-
I don't think we have it.
We have a couple.
You have to vote to put on, um, article thirty-four and article thirty-five.
Okay.
And article thirty-six.
And I got three quotes, I got three, I got another quote today.
Okay, so we have, we're going to put on now-
There it is.
Article thirty-four, to see if the town will vote to borrow, transfer, raise a sum of money to condemn and raise up three uninhabitable buildings in the town of Brookfield. I'll take any action there, too. And this was explained to me by, um, Mike, Mike about, he says, these, these buildings are no longer suitable for human habitation, and one has extensive fire damage, the other, it's on Kimball, has accepted, and it has septic on some, another neighbor's property, and it's not inhabitable, and the cost estimate is, he's got-
For that one, yeah.
That one is forty-five hundred.
The total is thirteen.
Yeah, the totals to do the both of them is thirteen-five.
Okay, I got a couple questions. What, what are the three buildings? What are the locations?
One is on Kimball.
Yeah.
This is all the information.
East Main.
This is all he, uh, Kimball and-
Lewis, Louis, the Louis Field one is, I think, on this list.
Yeah, that one, and then I think he said something about one on South Maple?
Uh, Louis Field, all right.
Louis Field is, is secured in, in, in-
Did he say some, did he say something about one on South Maple?
We have the right to take them down.
I don't know.
But I'll make sure that we get these out.
Do you have, have you, okay, so, and what's the other one? You, so you got one on Kimball and one on Louis Field?
I think, I don't know if he told me one on-
Louis Field, I don't see a health hazard with the one on Louis Field, but that's okay.
I don't know if he told me there's one on South Maple, too.
Are you talking about John Benoit, La Pointe's house?
Yes, that's whose house it is.
Now, what are, what are we talking about legal jog here? I mean, can you, I mean, there's a legal form that you have to go, you just can't go in there and do this. There's a legal format that has to be followed before you take buildings down.
Yeah.
Okay, have you done all that?
Has Mike Sirianni done all of it, I would say.
I know Mike was in contact with Jeff.
Yep.
Yeah, because Mike, the, the Board of Health is the one that's sponsoring these.
Yep, and I'm all for it.
I see, they may be going the opposite direction, they may not be filling out the full paperwork until they know that it's funded, so maybe you want to talk to Mike on it, because that would, that would be his-
I'm just, I'm just saying, when you're talking real estate, you got to go through the legal jog before you just go into someone's property and start doing things. You just can't, even though you think, oh, I'd like to see that house gone, or, or whatever, but there's, there's a procedure to go through, is what I'm saying.
Absolutely.
And I'm just asking on the town's behalf, make sure that we're safe to have permission to do this.
Well, this is, this is a question for Mike, because Mike, it's the Board of Health, so this is a question for them to-
Okay, I'll ask him then, okay.
Because he just asked us to put this on, and he told me-
I'll make a motion to put it on.
Put it on, absolutely, in second.
Aye, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then thirty-five, so we support that, right? Okay.
Hang on, are we supporting this, or you want to get more docs from the Health Board?
Well, they're going to have to have the docs to do it, right? So, I mean, I don't-
Well, I, yeah, as long as they have.
The thing is, if you fund it, where does the money go if, if they, for some reason they didn't?
It's a pretty long process, and, and John La Pointe's house just happened this year, so.
And some assets should be taken.
You can always revisit it at the special, if you feel that they're not, if, if you feel by then they haven't made enough progress in order to actually execute it in the fiscal year, you can always go ahead and re-vote the article at the special and say, only one of them is through the paperwork, and you don't think that they're going to get through the other two, you can always vote that amount down, so it doesn't-
Well, honestly, there's probably another fifteen houses in this town that we need to do this to, at least to start, you know?
Well, no, no, that's, that's not the issue, Tony.
Because that's all I'm saying, like, we got to start somewhere.
As long as it's a procedure, that's right.
You know, myself, I, you know, you drive, I mean, I don't know a house that's on Kimball Street, but they should take John Exton's house down, too.
That's, that's the one on Kimball, yeah, we-
That's the one.
Yeah, that's the one, on Kimball Street.
I thought, I thought this was the one on Papa Kimball, the two that are abandoned up there.
No, 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 no.
John Exton's house is going to go, yeah.
That's the one.
Um, but I mean, I just, you know, this is a-
I'm talking procedure, that's all I'm talking about.
Dave, I get it.
Yeah.
I'm saying, if we don't-
I'm not saying, oh, yes.
If you say help, we'll never just-
Yeah, yeah, if you don't put the money away, then if they do the pay, they could do the paperwork all day long, and they can't execute against it.
I don't, I don't think the procedure's in question here, Dave, I think just- What's, okay, what is?
We can't, we can't-
I, I think to move forward with the process is what the question is here. Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm all in favor of that, as long as we're following the procedure, that's all.
Oh, yeah, you, you, we'll have to talk to Mike about, see if he's following the procedure.
Okay.
I can talk to him, too, and you can also.
Okay.
And so, are we making a vote?
I'm just asking questions, to make sure the town is okay, that's all. We don't want to leave ourselves open for any, any kind of liability. Right, that's, I'm just looking off the town, that's all.
Okay.
You guys want to make a motion to accept this?
I'll make a motion, in a second.
Okay, who's seconding?
Tony, you're very hopeful.
Your motion, I second it.
Are, are we going to get, how, are we going to get our money back? Now, you're going to put a lien on each property, how much it costs to do this?
I think, I think, I, tax title already?
I don't know.
I think Knights is, I think Knights is in-
Knights is in tax title, yes.
So, I think the one by Lewis is in tax.
Uh, I think that one's in tax title, too, and I-
Is it in, or it's all the way through?
Yeah.
I think it may, that one may actually-
Oh, there's not too many that are all the way through, Beth, no.
Can you tell our voice though?
No, I don't think that is yet, she was, she had had-
That's the one I would be very cautious moving on, Josh.
We talked about doing like a real estate sale with some of these, a company was willing to buy a few of these properties, but that was not, we didn't close on that yet.
Okay, so we have a, we have a, a second?
La Pointe.
Motion, seconded.
We already did, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, now we have article thirty-five.
I'm saying, until we get more-
Are we all set?
Yeah.
Give me one, article thirty-five.
The passes.
To see if the town will vote to remember chapter four of the Mass General Laws Advisory Committee as follows, with new language to be added to the existing sections one and four, and this is noted in the bold type below. There shall be an advisory committee for the town, to which shall be referred all articles of a financial nature contained in any wa- warrant.
See that information in two days, or you're going to see that information in ten days, or you're going to see that information in thirty days, and how much that information is going to cost because of the cost incurred by the town?
Yep.
So-
Has to be given.
That's according to freedom of information, right, that's a separate, separate thing.
I've done it, and they gave me, there's a timeframe, and that's when I got the, I get, that's when I got it.
But you don't get the information, you get the, when you're going to get the information and what the cost is.
I did get the information within a set time.
Then in the ten days, you're notified.
Sometimes you do, sometimes you don't.
I did, so.
Okay.
And I've done it a couple different times at towns, and boom, it was there. So, I don't know where you're, you know, where you're coming from.
It's the law.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Well, they met the law.
But, but what he's, I think what he's saying is that there weren't any reasons given why you couldn't get it in a timely manner.
Yeah.
That's what he's saying.
That's all.
So, you're bringing all kinds of other things in-
Putting all sorts of things into it, and, you know.
Like possible reasons, you know?
Okay, so anyway, this, this is, this is, this is put, you know?
It's better than what we got.
Right.
So, that's why we decided to put that-
So, whatever's in bold is what they're going to, is how it's going to read, so you, if someone want to make a motion to accept it?
Or support it.
Support it, accept it?
Bobby, you said no?
I don't support it.
Okay.
Someone want to, you guys, no one wants to second it?
There's no-
I'd, I'd, I'd support the change here, in the language. That's what we're voting on, yes. I think that we're looking at some components here which may or may not be, which aren't going to be answered tonight, and I think that people want answers to, and we're not going to get them. We're not going to get those, no. Right. This, this is what we're voting on, what's here is what we're voting on. Exactly.
So, does anyone want to second this?
I would support the change in the language. Okay, someone want to second that?
I will.
Okay, any further discussion, Tony?
I was going to say, I, I didn't know, I, I don't know the original compared to, so I can't really-
Right, that's what I was, right.
Do you want to, you want to see it?
The original?
What's, what was changed?
I'm going to test the bold.
Whatever's in bold type is, is the, um-
They need to see it on the-
Just like-
Linda, I got another quote today, so I got three.
Oh, you got three quotes, okay, we'll talk about them.
On the steer, steer thing.
So, this was K and P's language here?
Yes, this was K and P's language, we're going by them. No, they're, they're KP Law now, it's not K and P, it's KP Law.
Right. Everybody goes K and P?
Yeah.
But they've changed it legally, though.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, it's KP Law.
KP Law now, okay.
Because when Mr. Copelman, he retired, now he started up like a, um, a real estate company all by himself, so that's why it's KP Law.
Thanks for that.
Peter's got a question.
What, what's changed, Tony? Any big changes?
Article thirty.
Is it, is it good still, or is it?
Okay, if you look at this, everything that's not in bold, is, is the two sentences it used to say, or the one sentence.
Do they have, they need it, or do they continue to do that?
So, that's good, okay. So, you're on, you're on board with it? Yes?
The seven, the seventy seven.
No, I haven't changed something that much, but it's very clear, it really does-
I thought it was.
And I checked with Cindy, and she said it was six thousand.
All right, so-
I don't know, the language doesn't-
Where do we, where do we stand?
Figure addresses.
Tony's no, Bob no.
Let me see if I have that.
Phil, you, yes?
So, if, if, so-
Yeah, I supported it, I made the motion.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So, I, I think we don't need to worry so much about the figure, because we probably have some alternate method of procurement-
So, does anybody want to second?
That are going to keep the figure-
Yeah, oh, that's right, yeah, okay.
That figure will be enough to handle both the highway and the fire, yeah. But what we need to do is ensure that the fire department is included in the verbiage. So, what we need to do is, is to-
I thought it was fine, it was.
Well, it doesn't say who it's, just, yeah.
Huh?
Oh, you know what, it doesn't say who it's for, so it's-
Oh, no, already went down.
It's fine.
What's that?
It's sixty-four.
Ooh. And, and just take out-
Storage cabinets.
Cabinets for flammable items, good catch, thank you.
We want to make sure that we back up to thirty-three before we forget about that.
No, it matters, so, the, the Oxford comma can maybe break a contract, yes.
And then, do you want me to add any explanation?
Yeah, because we, we don't support that.
Just, just that, that, to support, uh, uh, appropriate safety equipment in the departments, period, so.
Well, we can right now.
You said the departments are not compliant in too many-
Let's finish up on thirty-five.
No, 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 no.
Okay, have we finished on thirty-five yet?
No, I'm sorry.
Uh, so, wait a minute, one, two, okay, um, he said yes, he said yes, so it, it fails, the advisory does not support it.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, what's next?
Next is thirty-six, to see if the town will vote to borrow, transfer, and appropriate a sum of money to purchase a stair lift for access to the second floor of the town hall. And the selectmen and the advisory board support this article. Now, Dave, what's-
Well, I, I had that highlighted, you didn't vote on it, yeah.
Oh, we didn't vote on it, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to support thirty-six.
I'd like to hear what we're doing.
Want me to answer that, or?
Yeah.
Uh, we're going to get a stair lift, I mean, it's, it's not a stair chair, it's a, a platform lift, you can put a wheelchair on it, up to six or seven hundred pounds.
Yep.
And, and it will go up to the left side of the rail, go around the corner, and it will go up to a landing, and you can get out of there very comfortably, it's going to just, you're going to get off.
I'm, I'm, I'm totally cool with that part of it.
And we're trying to get, and the purpose of this, um, is so we can get access to the second floor, as you know, until you and your committee get an elevator with the grants, which may take five, six, seven years, we don't know, and in the meantime, we can get the upstairs before it goes, before it falls apart. And it's forty, it's around forty-five to forty-six thousand.
And ADA is going to buy?
Bill Simpson's on board, he's got all the, um, all that, and Jeff Taylor, the building inspector, will sign off, providing we get the, all the stuff from the state, that Bill's already got, and he also went to the both historical commissions, local and the state, and then he has to get the, um, what do you call it?
Architectural board.
No, not that, the other one.
ADA?
Permission from the ADA.
ADA.
What's the word, I'm trying to think?
Access board.
Yeah, but there's, uh, variance, a variance, I think.
Ah, we have to get a variance.
Once we get the, and they're on board with it, as long as they know that we're working on getting something permitted.
What were the, what were the prices that you got?
Forty-six.
Yeah, but you, you were supposed to get a-
I got, I got a couple more, too, yeah.
What were the other ones?
One, one was ten, uh, no, one was fifteen, and, but, but it doesn't take a wheelchair.
Sitting, okay, fifteen thousand.
And the other, and the other one is, is twenty-two, I believe, but that doesn't take a wheelchair either.
And so, the one for forty-six will take a wheelchair?
Will take a six to seven hundred pound person in a wheelchair, and it's a platform, it's, it's big. And I'm still working with two other companies to get two more bids.
Question I have is, we got to the second floor, do we have issues that be caused? We need access also to the third floor?
No, it's only, the third floor's just the balcony area, right?
About the ring bell, there you are.
Well, if, as long as we're not, as long as we're not using the third floor, and we're not, people, like, if we start using the third floor, regu-, you know, people that aren't handicapped, then we're in violation, but as long as we're not, you know, people not going up there on a regular basis, we're okay.
So, I don't think an elevator was going to go up to the third, third floor, it was stopping, it was going to stop at the second.
Just so we all understand, it was four million to go four floors, that's what-
Yeah.
For, just for an elevator?
Yeah.
No, 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 to go, fix this building to go four floors was four million bucks.
Yeah, and to, yeah, to renovate the building, right.
Yeah.
That's another, that's another topic.
So, we'll be getting there if we get to the second floor.
So, are you going to get, now, these are, now, you're going to get some more quotes?
I am, yes.
For this, and so we'll have the-
I want to try to get some off for the platform, versus with the chairs, I want to get like six of them, four, four or five of them, if I can.
Okay, all righty.
All right, so we need to vote on this?
Yes. Someone had to entertain a motion on the stair lift?
Do you vote on to put this on?
The handicap chair lift.
To support?
To support?
Section to support.
Second, everybody, any more discussion? All in favor?
All in favor?
All right, you got to go back to thirty-three.
Yes. We have to go back to thirty-three?
Yeah, because we don't support that. We need more information.
You didn't have thirty-three on here, that's probably-
We just wanted some more, uh, and we got, we got some quotes, I think, and there were a lot less than-
We, we haven't seen what their source of bids were, all we got was, um, you know, a sheet with estimated costs, and one of the things on there was, um, something, an outrageous, an outrageous price for, um, safety glasses, for instance, and-
Prescription, I think.
That's correct.
But I used to work for a company that provides prescription glasses for, uh, and safety equipment for, like, the city of Worcester, National Grid, Northeast Utilities, Veolia Water, all, you know, very big, important companies, um, and I used to handle actual prescriptions and the costs, and insurance and everything, and there's no way they cost that kind of money.
What kind of money would they say?
They could go, um, maybe a hundred and fifty bucks a pair, and then, I'm serious, I'm serious, and up, of course, depending on what you wanted to do, but there's no way they cost that kind of money.
But we could call it six hundred, right?
I think he said three hundred, wasn't it, three hundred?
No, there was, no, um, safety glasses, three hundred times two pairs, so six hundred dollars.
Yeah, so it's three hundred.
My last pair cost about two twenty-five.
Yeah, well, I think it may, it depends on where you go, my husband went, my husband went to a, um, a doctor as well, and it depends on what kind of frame you choose, there's a lot of different variables, we, we don't have to give Oleg Cassini safety glasses, okay? You know, it's just, but there were a couple of other things, too, um, another, mm?
So, you're not in favor, okay?
Well, no, but we want to, we're still, we're still looking for more information.
So, so we're supported at a different level.
Women, women favor, but we just, we're just trying to be a little more conservative on the prices and have actual cost.
How, how, well, however, he's including in here things that are already included in his budget, okay? Such as t-shirts and vests and that sort of thing, chainsaw boots, every guy needs a set of chainsaw boots at two hundred and sixty dollars, everybody's not, is going to be running the chainsaw, I mean, you know, and I, and I brought this to that, the company, and asked the guy to price it out for me, um, I have to check my emails when I get home and see if he forwarded that to me yet, and, uh, but he looked at this and said, that's overblown, and this is a guy with, um, probably close to ten years' experience for pricing things out for various entities, so, I just, we think it's too much, it can be done for a lesser amount.
All right, we'll come up with some figures then, and get back to us, and that's all we can-
Yeah, we're on board for the safety factor, I mean, I'm, I brought up the high hats myself, but we just-
We need that.
But, but the, the, the figures were a little, I mean, thought were pretty outlandish.
Will you go back, you, yeah, come back with us figures, and then we'll see the highway, and we'll see what they want to do.
Well, I'm hoping they can forward to us, like, the bid from the actual company that they're getting this stuff from, you know?
I'll call Cindy tomorrow.
I'll call Cindy, all right, so that's it?
I have, I have one more now, you said on your May second selectmen's meeting, you and Clarence said that you wanted to put on an article about reducing the taxes.
And then you decided no, you just saw it.
No, we just, well, we'll do it in the fall, that's what we said, because we don't know what we're going to have for money, so-
All the money will be spent by the time that happens, Linda, most of it.
No, but we don't even know, so we decided not to put it on, I don't think there was even one put on the year before.
Well, that doesn't mean we don't do it sometime.
We always don't, it was just, it was just a suggestion, because I didn't know really what we had for money, and it was-
You know, we meant, I meant to ask Carrie, did she get a, a, a certified amount of free cash yet?
No, she's got to, no, she's got to have all the work done.
We'll wait for a few more docs, okay.
This is why she's having Veda come in to help her out, to get everything straightened out.
Right, which is fine.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to close the town meeting, why?
You got the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. All right, um, how about we adjourn tonight, and on the thirtieth, we'll just specifically take on the, um, warrant line item, just that, and we won't put anything else on the war, on the meeting agenda.
Now, when is, when is, is that going to give, yeah, that gives us enough time for printing, okay.
Is that Wednesday?
That'll be, the thirty-first, that'll be Wednesday at six-thirty.
Um, well, if we get the information back from Highway, could we take that up then? Just so you guys know.
Well, we can amend it on the floor, too, right?
Yeah, it can be amended on the floor.
I mean, we can discuss it on the floor, right.
And then we'll just-
Carrie's going to also have some more information.
Yeah, on Wednesday.
On Wednesday, how's that look, Tony?
Carrie might have some more information on some of the articles, too far.
No.
I just got one for six-thirty a.m.
Bob, are you good?
I didn't send it, so.
You got one for what?
Oh, I did. Six-thirty a.m.
You going to be here?
On the thirtieth, on the thirty-first.
No, two p.m.
Oh, yes.
I'm telling you what came through on the thing.
Who's the phone?
Probably under the bus.
Sorry. Is this you, right?
That was me.
So, Wednesday, at six-thirty, and-
Contract for the chief.
I'll amend that.
Oh, yes.
Okay, okay, okay.
I think he got the deal, but I didn't send the chief's contract.
I read it.
Oh, come on.
Yeah, I, I'm-
If I had anything that-
Okay, you guys, do we want to bring anything else? Anybody have anything else?
So, I think, all righty, um, I'd like to entertain a motion-
I got Googled. Are you guys good? Anything else before the board?
Yeah.
Anything else before the Woodville?
I'll make a motion.
No, I'm, I'm, I'm fine. Bobby? Robert?
Yeah, but I have to read it, though.
Someone want to, I want to entertain a motion, do you return?
To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
So, this bill, a motion from Ted.
It's done under number two.
Is there another one for union negotiations as well?
I'm going to start bringing Bill five hours shy.
I think it's going to be sent, so you happy now?
Okay.
For you, anything?
And then we will come back, and we will, then we will do-
Bill, Bill, you have to, did you have all the other meetings written down? There was another one, there's Wednesday, and there was a-